Amen for the Fudge Legion?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nick, would you have our prayer?
Father, we thank you tonight for your grace and your mercy. It's been a very hot day, but the Lord will take it and appreciate it and thank you for it. Blessed now this evening, Father, as we put numbers together and represent the public that we would do right. You just have your way in our lives and we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Okay. Everybody sign in. We are missing Amy and Chuck. Okay, right in front of you are the minutes from last month's meeting, so we'll take some time to look at those over.
Can I add that there were a couple corrections made? It was a 3-2 vote on the building department and I added meth and wood as the two against.
Okay, is that on?
That is in the top section under the building. Last sentence. First page.
So with those edits, all the moves that we approved, the minutes dated May 9th, 2022.
Motion made to accept the minutes?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Anton. All those in favor? Opposed?
I'm in here, I'm staying.
Okay, I'm staying. Okay, we're gonna try to move this along for Sheila's behalf. So let's keep this rolling. Financial reunion.
Sure. Good evening, Council. So I prepared just kind of a basic outline. There's a number of topics. So if there's any point or you want to stop or there's some supporting questions or anything like that, you can just put it up for me at any time. So starting out, obviously, the settlement for the property tax is pretty settlement. It's already been completed. The Treasurer's Office, Home and Auditor's Office. I don't know if they were actually first, but clearly were one of the top three as far as getting that done. So I mean, that is really outstanding work that was done and that's been resolved and those funds have actually been reseeded in and put to the proper account. So when I'm giving these numbers, that is with the spring settlement. Just a really good job. So the standard monthly ledger that we do is comparing on the last day of the bond, each bond. One thing I just want to point out that the total amount of funds, there's that fund versus financial ledger, it's about seven pages, it has all the funds. At one time, that had gotten down to the range of around $5 million. And I'm just talking around numbers. But as of May 31st of 2022, there was over $13 million in the total amount of funds. That does not include the second distribution of the ARC money. So there's 13 million that was in the total funds in there. And Owen County has averaged about $10 million per month from January all the way through April. So these are very consistent and these are good numbers comparatively. The monthly receipts obviously were $16 million, but that's with settlement. So this is, this month in May and in December, you're getting a much larger number for that reason. But the amount of spending was less than the amount of receipts that came in in the month of May. All of your major funds, all your highway funds, streets and bridges, miscellaneous funds, all ended with a positive balance. So you don't have any operating fund that you're looking at. EMS, highway, Q bridge, general fund, all of these have positive balances. So this is exactly what you would want to see. The general fund expenditures, the difference, there was actually $750,000 that went in. There are some funds in the red, these are the grant funds and these are almost, every one of those are reimbursable. Talk about the historical part, I mean. So any fund that checked it, for example, like the Fund 9164 SARS, $536 in the red. These are all things that really are not concerning as far as in the past. So this part looked really good in every way. As far as the whole fund balance, just to kind of give you an idea, from January to May, there's a fixed number. The LIT certified distribution that comes in is 211, 124.58 cents. That's constant. You get that all 12 months throughout. But there are another variety of other streams of income. So from January to May, the average has been about $283,000. So when you're looking ahead, as far as kind of taking your best guess, what's probably going to come in July, August, September, planning out, 283 would be your historical average of those five months. Now, that can be, one's going to be up in the threes and one's going to be low. But this at least is going to give you a baseline and 211 is constant. If you're going to spend more in a month and you use that base of 283, then probably you're going to exceed the amount of the income for that particular month. The other part, as far as on the--
Real quick question on that one. So on that top line where we have a new property tax entry?
Yes.
In order to keep the numbers fairly consistent, should we kind of average that out over the current months of the year, like January through--
Could do it both ways, Anton. I'll tell you, for right now, your 283 does not include the property tax settlement. But for the July meeting, absolutely could. In fact, it's no problem to do both, just to have one number without and then we could put in dividing that out and give that number. Absolutely.
I mean, as long as there are no objection with other members. And I know at the end of the year, when you look at that revenue source, you know, it's supposed to be for the year. So you think the number of months we've had so far, you know, give or take, but by the end of the year, it'll average out.
Yep. No, absolutely. That's not a problem at all. So I'll just have, I'll just do both and then that way with the property can kind of give an idea of what would come in. But yes, but that on your 283, that's absolute correction. That does not include the categories that would come into settlement. That's purely the revenue streams that you'd normally see each month from January through December. The general fund, as far as the balance, again, this is the sixth consecutive month that the general fund has a positive balance, starting in December of 2021. It was the first positive balance in a couple of years and then 2022 has been straight through. As of on May 31st, the general fund balance was $1.5 million compared to about a year ago where it was 1.6. So Counsel, I would, and this part, everything else factual, this one penny, I would congratulate the Counsel. That's a 3.2 million turnaround in basically little over 12 months. So that's by the choices made by this Counsel. Again, 3.2 million turnaround in about one year in the general fund. There should be no reason by maintaining the budget, taking expenditure. Again, I'm from the Hoosier, so the kind of chickens and hatching and all that, it's a familiar phrase, so I don't want to go too far. But with good fiscal responsibility, we would expect 2022 to have a positive balance for the remaining months of the year, even though we still have seven more actual months to go with that. But those are all the trends or everything that you would want to see on the streams. So what does that mean then as far as your cash fund? So I wanted to bring this to the attention of the Counsel. Again, there's a number of funds that come in that you're responsible for. These are, I won't go through all 12, but just to give you an idea, the amounts, at least on May 31st, the funds that had the largest cash balance, this Fund 1151, that's EMS. It had a cash balance, I'm just going to round to the top number, $1.7 million. The amount of money still remaining in the American Rescue Plan was again, was 1.7. Chris was actually 1.75. American Rescue Plan was about 1.7. The general fund was 1.5 million. So your top three funds were EMS, Rescue Plan, and then the general fund was third as far as the cash balance. 1233 is four, that's a correctional facility. That is, on the 31st is $880,000, but its distribution for June has come in, so it's over $900,000 now. This is approaching a million. This is where you want to see that fund. If at all possible, you want to not spend out of this fund. This is what I'm going to need to see for the jail project. But this million dollars, which we get in there, means that's one less million dollars that has to be borrowed for the jail project. So we want to stay away from touching this. This is also the same fund that is under that time clock. It does expire after a 22-year period. So we want to keep an eye on that. Right now, it's basically going into the bank. That's what you want it to do. But it is, it is going to reach or is coming close to reaching that million, million dollar. The other ones just work their way down as you see and then like 1235 is 12 and that has $300,000. So it's primarily your top four substantially, then the others are kind of about three quarters of a million and work their way down. But this will give you an idea.
A question on that, maybe you can comment. We've talked about this before briefly, but I think it's important to make it very clear that in the way that the rates were set with the state, that EMS had an unusually large, larger than normal rate and thus they got a large chunk of the settlement, which is not necessarily the intent, but the general fund should have normally had the bulk of that or the majority of that. So can you comment a little bit on that part, Jim? Just for clarity?
Sure. So I'm going to, that's fine. I would say, Counsel, should have reported 1151 EMS dated 25th. So I'm going to go into the prior settlement years. In 2019, when EMS got their spring settlement, it was, I'm going to round, it was roughly about $234,000. In 2020, it was $382,000. In 2021, it was $359,000. Those were the actual spring settlements. So 234, 382, 359. Spring settlement in 2022, $1.3 million. So easily 900, I mean, it's rounds what's plus 2 million, we could cut that, but at least 900,000 more than what historically they've got. It was based on the rate so that went in. So you have what that means. In 2019, the total revenue for EMS, spring settlement, winter settlement, and Chris does a really good job on the billing and the revenue that comes in. Standing up on that, the total revenue in 2019 was about 1.1 million. That's everything. In 2020, the total revenue was about 1.4 million. And in 2021, the total revenue was 1.4 million also. By May 31st this year, the first five months, the EMS revenue just in the first five months is $1.6 million.
I got a question. Wasn't there a couple of years there that the rate was back way, way off? Was that before the 2019?
That was before 2019. I could pull those numbers again for you. I've got them somewhere. If I could have brought those tonight. But you know, historically, we were bringing in around $800,000, $700,000 and then one year it dropped to 250 or 300.
Yeah, 234. Yeah, 2020. If you were going prior to that, in 2019, it dropped to 234.
Is that what it was?
Yeah. I don't know what it was in 2018, but in 2019, it was 234.
It dropped a huge amount.
So what we need to, what we need to make sure doesn't happen is that same issue going too far the other way.
Exactly, that's what I was trying to say.
And Chris, we've kind of talked about this where we kind of need to think a little bit about what the ideal budget will be, particularly for '23, plus what an ideal operating balance would be. You know, something that is sustainable in case of an emergency, so many months worth of operation. For instance, if revenue doesn't come in or it gets delayed, almost like a reserve. And then kind of do the reverse math and think back, okay, how much excess is really there that is available? Because not all of that is something that should be used or taken or whatever for the general fund purposes, because we don't want to leave EMS in a weird situation. So that, we need to be sensitive to that issue.
Yeah, we can. The days of leaving off big target budget items like the rotation and things had been no good.
Well, and he is looking at a year out. What, did you say with the ambulance, it's a year from when they built the chassis?
We're looking at from, correct me if I'm wrong. The way I understood it was from the time that they received the chassis, it's been taken up to a year to get a chassis. From the time they receive the chassis, it's a year before the unit will be built. So if that holds true, if I ordered it today, it would be June 13th of 2024 before we got it. And as we commissioners, you know, especially Gary, I've talked to him quite a bit about it. I've got one truck now that is down. It's one power load system in it and it's been down for a month. And the estimate to repair it's anywhere from $6,000 to $25,000. So depending on once they get it apart, what they find. So you're talking, I think, a large amount of money to repair a vehicle that's got 150-ish thousand miles. And but we've got to keep it going because it's going to be two years before we get done.
Right. So you can, you almost have to look two years ahead and you can't, I mean--
We can't keep the trend of not replacing.
Right.
It's biting us. We're getting back in where we were 15 years ago and we're spending more repairs than what a three-monthly.
And that's a good example where it may at the moment look like that's been unspent or not used, but that's really not a true thing. It's just been simply delayed. We want to make sure that that amount's there on a regular basis to cover the expense. And would it be wise to, considering the amount of time that there is to wait for an ambulance delivery to, if you're thinking about, you know, that first purchase, shouldn't we already be right on top of that second one and get that ball rolling?
You said '24. Actually, I think we're talking '25 because we're June '23, a year for the chassis and plus building it. Talking two years out of that. I'm just going two years from today. The 25.
That's terrible.
We're 23 right now.
If we got the cash balance, it'll all be good.
It'll all be good.
One thing is, and is in the motion, should be discussed to do just what he said.
Get that second one going.
So I think what our point is, is that that cash balance, even though it looks large now, I mean, that's--
Kind of churn it out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't mean to interrupt.
Oh, no, not at all. No, that's, you're being, my-- So do you want to hear some other ramifications about this fund now or later? Or the reason I say that is at some point, Owen County is going to have to work on the jail project. Okay, so what in the world does the jail project have anything to do with Fund 1151? When it's time to make the negotiated note mortgage, one of the questions will be, when we're getting the best interest rate, we're getting the best deal, is these are going to have to be, this, it has to be backed by your LIT distribution, all right? The LIT distribution goes into general fund. LIT distribution, at this point, is not going into the EMS fund. One of the very first questions the bank is going to ask, someone from financial is going to ask is, why is 1151 having the highest cash balance compared to the general? So it's something that from a Counsel perspective is the different options that you have. One option is taking the 1151 and putting it in the general and doing an appropriated budget. At that point, all of this money, so you're 1.7, you're 1.5, 3.2. You don't change any appropriations. You don't change anything that does. It's purely an option that could be there. The other one, though, would probably be at the very best is at least a concern for 2023's budget as far as looking at these rates up here, because there will be a question raised when it's time to try and secure, whether it's a $15 million note or a 12 or an 8, whatever we're able to have is, it's based upon on that LIT distribution. So from a purely mathematical, purely fiscal, it is something the Counsel wants to at least recognize what you want to do as far as this base. I agree totally, Chris, without any doubt. There's no problems in his funds. They're all positive. The billing is averaging $83,000 a month right now from January to April. There's that much coming in on top of the two settlements. And there may be other ways that you may want to do the fund. You may want to leave it, you may want. But I do believe I do have at least a duty, because you've asked me to kind of look at that. It's one of the things that will be a question before the fiscal. When we're looking at a jail and we're looking at a $15 million project, do we have everything in the general fund that's centered that would make us more desirable for a better interest rate? So does anything about tonight is something I would ask that you just take a look or, you know, kind of examine with that.
I got a quick question.
Sure.
So we wanted to project that we would be able to save, now the sheriff's lit $900 to a million when we reorganize this, or are we on target?
No. If you're talking about purely 1170, purely the sheriff, there will not, no. You have a $65,000 excess window going in. And we'll get to some of the other problems in a minute. But the direct answer to your question, no, there is no way foreseeable in 2022 that the sheriff's budget is actual expenditures are going to be in the range of $2.1 million. No, that is absolutely not going to happen. There's a $65,000 window as far as here's what's the appropriation and we know exactly how much is going to come into the penny. And again, if we spend every penny of the appropriation, there's $65,000 left. And there are still some issues, so I'll talk in a few minutes about the appropriation. Short answer to your question, I'm an answer to that problem, no. No, there's not going to be any state money there. There is a good target on the 1233. That is going very well. That billion seems to be very realistic.
And along those lines, just for reference, for every $500,000 that we put down towards a jail project, so, you know, we're talking about a $15 million figure earlier. So if you were to finance that 15 million at 6% for 20 years or whatever, it'd be about $26 million in total for the entire life of that loan. But for every $500,000 that's paid down and not borrowed, you're saving about $360,000 over the life of the loan. So if by the time there is a jail project kind of formalized or it's time to proceed and for instance, we have, you know, 1.4 million in the facility fund and you wanted to put that down towards that cash balance, that could save almost a million dollars in overall cost, you know? So there's certainly no, nothing bad with having the balance. There's some things we could do with that, depending on where you want your payments, how much you want to finance and kind of put the package together.
Everything that you guys want me presenting. My bias or my underlying assumption is trying to get the largest amount of money, whatever called in the bank, in your funds, where then you would have that option of 1 million, 2 million, maybe more, putting that down. Because just as Anton said, you're talking about the real savings of hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars that could be saved. That's why, again, purely on a mathematical rationale, that's why I keep coming back and stressing the possibility of the 1151. But that's only looking at it from one direction and I want to be clear about that. But put it in there because Chris is normal on 1151. His expenditures, which are always in line, aren't going to come close to the amount of actual revenue. There's going to be a surplus of a cash balance in 1151. As you as a Counsel, do you want that surplus to remain at 1151? Or are you wanting to redirect that, to put that in the general so you have these options? That's the only thing that I'm saying. But there, it should be several hundred thousand dollars difference by the end of the year.
But one thing that Chris and I have talked about is taking that excess and putting it toward the, you know, toward the, did you find what the payoff was or were you able to?
He did not return the call.
Oh, okay.
Do you know what the ballpark balance is, Chris?
I found the paywall from where I paid it this summer and $766,000. So that's, you know, I've come up with some things that I think that we could-- It's no secret that, you know, my EMS's income from taxes took a big swing in the opposite direction, you know, probably too far. I don't think there's anybody that could quarrel that it didn't go too far. I mean, it just did. But I've come up with-- But I've come up with some things that I think that would be beneficial to do for the county, that we could do that would free up many of my budget, and I think would line us up better with the banks when it came down for a jail project. So.
Yeah, and that'd be one of those good one-time, one-transaction type things. And I'm just hypothetical, like Paulie was mentioning, if you were to pay the balance off of the EMS building loan, then that dollar amount, at least rough glance, is kind of in the ballpark, and that would free up the amount of the payment that's in your budget, which would give you more operating flexibility. It would also save a lot of interest that the taxpayer wouldn't have to pay.
Oh, yeah.
Which, or the bank wouldn't make, um, which would be very helpful. And it wouldn't be one of these small trans, you know, hundreds of small transactions, use this fund to pay this, and, you know, that the auditor's office would have to go through, uh, to kind of spin down that surplus, you know? This would be one, one large transaction and you're kind of done. And you get multiple birds with one stone. So that, that's a good idea.
Again, council has pointed out, but these are excellent discussions where you're talking about how to save Owen County taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars, necessarily conversations we could have had a couple of years ago, but right now you're looking at two hundred and fifty.
Saying you really need to do some good figuring so you wouldn't get into buying no, on, I think you need to know what you really need, your operation money. You know, we don't want to get two departments in trouble, you know?
And again, not sparing those, those big budget items that, that need to happen.
So does that mean, I mean, just general discussion, he's already looking at the hundred and ninety-nine thousand that they just approved, and if you're looking at the next phase, then you'd add another two hundred thousand to it, plus seven hundred and sixty-seven for this, so, and, and if raises are given, then he could sustain them too. So it's using, utilizing that cash balance for huge expenses and.
That's actually going to save money, yeah.
And something I had, so you're talking about fifteen million dollar jail, that's not going to happen, we're trying to get a refund for fifteen million, we can't afford to do that, so we're going to be back on the floor, we're looking at a whole new jail project that's going to put us back in that twenty-five to thirty million dollars, that's where we're going to be at, the fifteen millions off the table.
Well, the good thing is that with that, if you were to have money to put down.
Right.
That gives you more to work with if you keep your, you could still keep the same payment, but you have more to spend or put towards the project.
And it's going to take more because the number's going to be double what we originally were looking at.
A lot of moving parts, uh, of course, on something like that, but it's certainly of value, gives us some options, you know?
Council, the next area is near appropriation, so, and in all the different funds and all the different line items, there's hundreds and hundreds of line items. Uh, so the good news is there's roughly about thirty line items that kind of stand out that at least as of May thirty-first, either by the spending over the thirty-first, or projected out through December that these would exceed appropriation. So this, this is just more for point of information, some, so if it was over, it was over. So in one case, it's four dollars, but, I mean, just you had to draw a line. So the, these on your list are just ones that are over. Uh, some of them can be resolved by transfers, some of them, people have already asked for additional appropriations, but I would suggest by, by no later than your July meeting, that if you're going to want to make some of the appropriations, for, for example, for whatever reason, in the lit economic development, it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar appropriation, but the, the total bill is going to be one hundred and twenty-five thousand and four dollars. Uh, the reason I bring that up, rather than bombard the auditor's office in November with all these deadlines, it's just something we want to take a look at in July on some of these, it can be cleared up, you know, if you know what's going to happen. Others are more as far as the transfer. So that, this one is just your point of information, might want to take a look at, trying to, trying to knock that one down. But there's two categories that I do, do ask, we think we probably ought to discuss today. Uh, so the last time we met, the hope was that, like, if I was talking about something maybe pessimistic about the economy, I could come back to you today and say, you know, I was totally wrong, you know? But since we've been here, since our last meeting, gas is going up at what I believe one dollar a gallon, just in the past four weeks here. The stock market at least be tight before plummeting, uh, were the words were being used. My understanding inflation is at a forty-year high, uh, historically, and at least a number of economists, right or wrong, are saying that we're either in or we're likely going to be in a recession. So with, with these things, one of your areas that we're looking at is in gasoline, when I say gasoline, I'm just meaning fuel, diesel, gasoline, just put them all in the same category. But clearly, like right now, EMS, sheriff's department and highway are going to miss their targets. And again, for anyone that, when I say they're going to miss, I'm talking about just purely mathematical, I'm not talking about any personal, they should did better, not better, we're just talking about the rationale, that when this budget was predicted back in August of almost a year ago, it was not anticipated that fuel was going to be five dollars a gallon, six dollars a gallon for diesel. So they're not over today, but within thirty days and clearly within sixty days, the, the, these are going to, to exceed. Best projection, just by historical average, so these are low, I try and do better, these are low, EMS will miss by roughly twenty-one thousand, sheriff fifty-six thousand, highway a hundred and seven thousand, these are probably too low. They're flat, like, you know, I'm not saying you're off, but this was probably an average of fuel at three, four, not, this was not based on today at five twenty-five. So the questions are, what, how, how are you wanting to resolve that? I mean, there's obviously a number of areas, but I don't see this problem going away. So as a, just on a little projection, probably looking at a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars at a minimum. Now, the highway's did a few things, uh, they went to four-ten, uh, the superintendent, uh, not, not speaking for him, but he did call today, there's a possibility of trying to, uh, work on some maybe month-to-month, uh, price, you know, availability, we'll see, I don't know, but, but I think, what I, I guess what I'm trying to say is, all these departments are trying, and these are your main ones, so your small departments, they just have one truck, they're all missing two. But I didn't, you know, take, well, here's three more hundred, four hundred, you, you already know that. So really, I think you're probably looking at a two hundred thousand dollar, just the ballpark of, of missing. It truly kind of the council's pleasure, what, what, how you would want to look at this, this operation.
You're talking a little over two hundred for under budget.
Jim, what, what, if, if we're just basing the historical rule of what's been appropriated, what's already been expended as May thirty-first, using those numbers, it's looking at probably two hundred thousand dollars is going to be needed in a, in additional money.
Shorter towards the budget schedule.
Yeah.
So I think that from, like, for the sheriff's department, is, since they're part of their, are you okay, Nick? Correct me if I'm wrong, the fuel that he will often purchase, that's being used by his department and EMS, so there's an internal linkage to the fuel reimbursement fund by EMS is paying out of their budget to put into fuel reimbursement, which is supposedly there to then offset or help the sheriff's department's deficit because another department is using the fuel, right?
Use decent fuel, we don't.
Okay, okay, so.
He doesn't fuel for us.
Who all's fueling from you?
My, he gets some, probation.
Got it. I'm more of a miscellaneous grouping.
And stuff like that, but the issue that you have with them right now, that their fuel budgets are spent, they can't reimburse me.
So whatever is going on with that, which would be, there'd be a small amount in there somewhere, you'd want to utilize that balance to, to go towards at least part of his deficit. But then whatever's left, if you're wanting to shore up the general fund or not stream that, and you're still wanting to build up strength for our financial status, then you'd have to look at something like Riverboat or something like that, you know, which we do have plenty in. Of course, for the twenty-three budget, when we're talking about fuel, obviously those line items are going to wind up needing to be up, and that would address that moving forward. But for twenty twenty-two, it's kind of a one-time shore-it-up thing, and I don't know if the council would prefer to help the general fund or, or, you know, either way would, would do it, but.
What's the current amount in the vote?
As of what, six, eight, it's two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six forty-nine, seventy-one.
So it's spinning that down quite a bit.
Go down to, I mean, if it's before two hundred thousand.
Yeah. You'll have another.
A little fifty-seven thousand.
Two fifty-seven.
And you'll have another hundred and, about a hundred thousand or so for August revenue that'll come into that fund.
Personally, I kind of like the fact of keeping the general fund in, you know, as pristine a condition as we can, so I think, I, I think the Riverboat would probably be the best option.
You can tell me, totally, but EMS and highway probably can go another three days, by, by looking, looking at the numbers. Sheriff's Department's getting really close.
We're six, we're six hundred dollars in the whole.
So they're, they're kind of at a point of decision now. I mean, there's a number of ways you want to go, if you want to do the whole, like, advertise for the whole two hundred, if you want to do it in, in kind of increments, but, but nothing like here, I mean, I can't predict any better than one else, but, but I can see that it was five twenty-five on my way down here.
Well, you know, and getting the can down the road, I want to be honest, I think the potential for it to be worse next month is better than it being better.
Okay. So fuel reimbursement has thirty-eight thousand in it. What about, like, for the sheriff's department, what about, like, his next purchase or two, go ahead and claim it against that instead of his line item in his budget? And, and then when the others, or when even when he runs out there, then claim it against, like, Riverboat, you know, have a line item in Riverboat for fuel, and then that way, we're not doing additional appropriations into the, you know, EMS and into sheriff, we're doing it in one place where the fuel purchases are going to be coming out of, uh, which will benefit everybody, you know, including highway, EMS, the big three biggies. Would that be a, a good accounting or process approach, or what, what's better when, when the money, the line item runs out?
The execution of that one, if there was a line item for.
Either way, you have to do additional appropriation process. So sometimes it's easier just to go ahead and use the Riverboat and do the large amount, because you're going to have to go back for more. So this would still give him that thirty-eight thousand to fall back on that is already in that fund and can be utilized anyway. If, and the additional appropriation processes take at least two, two and a half months to happen.
For those regular funds. Now, Riverboat doesn't have the same two-step for it.
You still have to submit additional appropriations.
Yeah.
Um, which, and hold public hearings for them, so like Jim said, the EMS and, and highway, you can let them run in the red if we know that that appropriation is, is going to happen. We can't let Sam's fund.
Right.
Run in the red, not in line items or cash balances either one. So it's important that he keeps an eye on, and, and again, we're monitoring almost daily all of his fund balances and cash balances just to try to keep up. But again, this would be an emergency reserve fund and/or could possibly be considered for the twenty twenty-three budgets, do one, my suggestion is do it one time, additional appropriations.
So do like an additional appropriation one time out of Riverboat, the two hundred thousand then?
Maybe we should proceed in just getting that set up, uh, because by the time we get through these steps, it's going to be go time on these budgets.
Can we request that it be a fuel reimbursement and list all three of those funds so anybody can draw from it, not specifically just the sheriff's department?
Oh, yeah.
So, quick question, as you guys look at your future rotations with the platforms you guys are buying, are there, you know, hybrid options of any kind that are coming out that can?
You know, we're, we're looking at everything we can look at right now, Andy, as far as vehicles, so the thing you have to be careful with on some of the hybrids is the muscle, I guess you'd say. I mean, some hybrids are okay, but they don't have the muscle that you need to get to where you need to go.
I, I was just curious.
We are looking at, as, as we speak, by.
I think you'd look good in a Prius.
And I just wondered about the maintenance.
Their cost could be higher.
Here's the, they should write out that the vehicles for twenty twenty-three, which you can't even get right now, they don't even want to talk about, or about seventeen thousand dollars higher. But the other issue is like filters, oil, tires, your, you know, what you do, it's astronomical, and labor rates, labor rates have now increased, you know, they got to get through money, through labor now too, so it's a dollar effect, it's going to get to person.
So do we want, does somebody want to?
I'm going to go and make a motion that we appropriate, advertise to appropriate two hundred thousand dollars from the Riverboat Fund for the purpose of fuel purchases, for the benefit of any county, department or office that has to rely on fuel.
Second. Seconded.
So, a motion made by Anton, seconded by, did you guys decide?
Yeah, it was Verul.
Okay. Seconded by Verul. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
I do have a quick question on that, you can only draw from that fund once you've been appropriated for your twenty twenty-two fuel budget. Correct?
Right.
We don't want to build some of the guests.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, and then sheriff, you can claim against fuel reimbursement as soon as you need to, because you're the most, in the most sensitive position involving your, your budget, so. What is the typical purchase on the, and do you know offhand if you were to fill it up?
Thirty-four, thirty-four hundred dollars for the River.
Okay, okay, got it.
Counsel, just a couple more, I apologize, I know.
You're fine.
A couple more, so with the gasoline, there's still one more appropriation, it goes back to the sheriff's department. So the sheriff's department as far as meals, and this is the food, uh, the, the amount was ninety thousand dollars that was appropriated for the entire year. So looking at averages, again, the averages are based upon, in essence, yesterday's food prices, which doesn't necessarily mean that's what they are today or will be next week. So again, these are going to be kind of low, but for the most part, historically, in Feb, in February, April and May, the amount of food for the jail meals was roughly about eleven thousand five hundred in that ballpark. So looking at, if, if somehow even the expenditure for food could be kept at twelve thousand dollars a month, seventy-two thousand more dollars would be spent, there's only forty-one thousand dollars in the remaining balance. So this is projected to miss at a minimum of thirty-one thousand. And that, that is based on best price of yesterday and suggesting the twelve thousand dollars per month. So as of today, I mean, I'm sorry, as a, the, on six page, the, even with the client, it showed there was a balance of forty-one thousand, nine hundred and six dollars and sixty-two cents in the cash amount of appropriation. So it won't run out this month, but, but this is another one that, that again, based on prices, I have said it to a hundred percent certainty that this will exceed the appropriation.
So here's one potential solution on that is, is the, whatever the difference ends up being, can, can we use jail housing then to cover that difference? can, can we use jail housing then to cover that difference?
Well, I want to be, I want to be real careful. I don't want to break up anything, but you know, last year, we spent a hundred eighty-two thousand dollars for jail housing money to cover costs, fifty thousand dollars for bill, fifty thousand dollars for medical, paid eighty-two thousand dollars. I've not heard anything from the state yet. When are we even going to get a drop this year for our inmate services? That's still kind of in the air a little bit. It's usually been flatlined by eighty-six thousand dollars dollars. The correctional facility money, we got eight hundred and some thousand, nine hundred and some thousand dollars in there. And Gary touched this while we bought too. I've not spent a dime on that jail too much. Because we're trying to increase that balance.
Yeah, we're talking, I'm talking jail housing, not facilities.
I'm getting.
Okay.
We've not spent money from the correctional facility. I ain't going to make a profit, but both of these guys knows we got. We can spend a half a million dollars tomorrow, never bad enough, but we're not. Because we're looking at the future of getting that money, cash balance up there. We're making the week to negotiate a jail project. So we're trying not to spend. So we're going to have to try and rely on the jail housing money as well for other needs and services too. Because I don't know how much we're going to have left in our budget to cover some other costs. You know what I'm saying? So I don't want, I don't want to deplete my jail housing. I don't want to do anything with it till I know what I'm going to get from the state. And I don't know that till end of next month or back middle of next month.
Yeah, it's good to be sensitive to that. That's a good point. And it appears that based on the timing, that we still have time to, to evaluate this, but it's coming, you know, it's going to be short at some point at the end of the year. But it's probably not going to fall into the negative, you know, by even September. But that, would that be enough time to reevaluate that? And we may know more on the, on the difference too.
I just want to know, I'd like to see what we're going to get depositing from the state for our inmates in August. We got thirty-seven thousand dollars left to mail right now. We're trying to negotiate some food costs, prices. We have one matter completely shut us down. One thing's fair, not only the price of the food, but the surcharges they're charging for delivery. And one kind of interest is they will not deliver to us anymore because we're not spending ten thousand dollars a week. It's kind of out of the way. So we are in some price negotiations, trying to buy stock, supplies over abundance. If we can get that done, that's going to help us a bunch. Uh, one thing to few people, servants, art and some other people who, that they just showed up one day and brought food overstocked. And that helps us, not save us some several thousand dollars. So but let's just wait till after we get our deposit, see where we're at then. Because I don't know how much, on other issues, we're going to need to.
Yeah, that's interesting to see. No, that, that probably is going to be one of those that will need some type of appropriation. Okay. And the other thing on the fund eighty-nine fifty is the art money, the art projects. So the first round of money came in about a year ago, last May. One point six million was dedicated to the highway projects. So the bridge sixteen Rocky Hill, Bridge one sixteen Franklin, Bridge forty-four West Lake, and the resurfaced of the entire area of Hardscrabble Road. Those bids have went out and those bids have been awarded. I remember, I believe, I think one of the bridges is already completed and Hardscrabble Road is a time sensible project with the expectation that they're done roughly by, by mid-August. Those total amounts for the projects were roughly eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. That leaves about seven hundred and forty thousand left for highway projects. I know the commissioners or Highway or Highway Department are working, chip and sale are different ones. But those, so there's seven hundred and forty thousand still remaining. And that's going to be in excess of the three, three new bridges and the one new road resurfaced. The art money has to be spent. So it's not like, well, this, and, and you can't, you can't just say, okay, well, here, take the four million, put it in general fund. We went through all this department. So this on the one area. But the secondary, we're going to talk about, just briefly, is I believe the Auditor's Office got notification today that the funding of the second wave of money is in. And so that can be processed and then that will be deposited in eighty-nine fifty. Now, what has been discussed in the past would be, now that we have the exact amount, we have the money for the bid would go in front of the commissioners. It's already in the proper bucket, but then they would be lining it out. So the two, the two alternatives that have been discussed, and I believe is the path that the council was thinking on going with, is this is all going to be recovered revenue. So in Fund one thousand, Fund one thousand, this won't be all of them, but Fund one thousand, the Clerk's Office, the Auditor's Office, the Treasurer's Office, all of these areas, and they think it's in one thousand, it has a location. That payroll money can be now, if approved by commissioners and approved by you, will be paid directly out of the art fund once we get this. Now, clear restriction, the auditor is an elected official. So the Department of Treasury has suggested strongly not paying your policymaker, but all of what we call the employees, that, that is completely fine. So FICA, perf, and their payroll. So the normal payroll, if we can get this going by, say, mid-July or August, the August first payroll, December one, you know, kind of can be done first, would be paid then directly out of eighty-nine fifty. So the money that was normally deducted out of the general fund, it, it stays. So your, your balance is going to continue to increase in, in your general fund. So what we need to do, when we get the exact amount, go to the commissioners. And that can be done, yeah, there's two commissioners meetings prior to the next council meeting, the twentieth and the fifth. And we can go and go through and clear out the departments and make sure we've got all the departments that match. Reason why about, you know, using cliches, you know, measure twice and cut once. We do not want to be in a situation where that money has to be paid back. So we'll just walk through this. We'll double check. I'll, I'll do my, my first check, Barnes and Thunberg that runs it, we'll do the double check by State Board of Accounts and then come in. But by, what would happen then is roughly, of, of, going to use then would be that money, say, in the range of about two million dollars. That two million dollars is going to be, be able to be built up. So that's payroll, that's acceptable. That, that process will be starting right away. The other aspect was in your Fund eleven seventy-six, the Highway, for about a four hundred and eighty thousand. The exact same process. You take the Highway Superintendent out of it because he's a policymaker. And then all the other Highway employees, their payroll will be directly out of eighty-nine fifty. But the end of the, end of the time, when you have it, I think this is going to be a possibility for the council to resolve your two historical funds that were in the red. Those can be resolved. You're going to have a larger balance in your general fund. And I think this would be a very prudent matter. So step one that occurred was today, the minds come in, get that receipted, go to the commissioners either the twentieth or the fifth, come back to you at your July meeting, actual appropriations and get those advertised, and then go ahead and start, start the draw. If, the time limit will be fine. This will carry over into twenty-twenty-three. But for twenty-twenty-two and then in twenty-twenty-three, until that, until that money is exhausted.
By April twenty-twenty-three?
Most likely. Yeah, that, that seems, that seems to be, you know, very realistic.
That's when the next annual report is due. I think they say March thirty-first.
Yeah. So that would be it. The final, if that.
So question on that for Highway, is that going to be fast enough to help Highway? You know, they're on a much thinner margin at starting point, if you will, than general. And so for their four eighty, for instance, target to recover, how soon do you think they would benefit, like their cash balance would really benefit? Would, are we talking a year away? Are we talking three months? You know, what, what kind of timeline on that?
The, the last estimated payroll was roughly about eighty thousand a month.
Okay.
So, I mean.
Okay.
You know, so eighty, you know.
So six months times eight.
So if we get this done by July, that'll get cleaned up for the end of the year.
That would be very good.
Jim, if I'm not mistaken, the commissioners already voted on this plan.
You, you, the, the plan is voted.
They just haven't approved their side.
But what, what we need, what we want to do, this, this true double check is just bringing it back to you where we specify treasurer, auditor, all, all of those that are, but no, the commissioners' work is ninety-nine percent done. This is just more specific. Here, here are the ones, and here is the highway. That's all.
Do they need to approve their, before it comes back to us?
No, it will come, it'll come to you, then all of the things will be done. It's mere approval of the appropriation. That, that's it.
So what, I mean, because I know there was, Gary, if you want to, I mean, lay out, you guys had stipulation on your, your plan.
We're just trying to get these employees in the courthouse back up to, since I've been here and it's been said, we can't pick and choose, but we have to pick and choose. We've done EMS, we've done Sheriff, we've done Highway, we've done court systems, we've done probation. We've done EMA. These courthouse hourly employees have been left out of that pick and choose. This is an opportunity with this ARPA fund to get them caught up. We approved that, correct about, we voted on that. And put it back to you.
So now what we need to vote on then is, I mean, because that's part of the plan that you.
Part of the two million dollar plan.
Right. So we need to make a motion, from what I understand, make a motion that.
We don't rule on that till after the legislature, Gary, again, right?
No, but we're, uh, I think we're talking two, two kind of, kind of separate things in the way. The everything that I addressed is purely the reimbursement of the money that normally would be paid out of one thousand and eleven seventy-six will now be paid out of Fund eighty-nine fifty directly through payroll. This is the presentation that's been, and I believe there's roughly nineteen employees that are within the confines of the courthouse, employees that work at the Auditor's Office, Treasurer, Clerk, that have not, have been listed as far as where other groups have come in and said are raised. They, they have not. So the question then is with the council, with this full dictation of the council, if you're wanting to increase their wage of those individuals to, to what amount? That would be done. Now, that's, that's a pay raise, okay? Now, the payroll, at least for the first beginning, I mean, is going to be paid, I mean, out of ARPA. But ARPA will, will expire. This would be a permanent increase in the wage for twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five on. But this is, I think, the two kind of presentations. One was moving people to the midpoint kind of collectively. This is distinctly aimed at roughly nineteen, nineteen employees that would be best described, worked, worked inside this, this courthouse.
And that included the two, uh, Highway. Sorry, that same.
So is there any details on this as far as amounts and where, where's the? Compensation and Structure Review Committee, I guess, with this.
Okay. Well, I think that's all a little bit separated because this has to do with the ARPA funds and, and the wage committee.
Does for a year, but it's going to be.
I have a question. I mean, wait, wait just a minute. Do we, I mean, is, since the commissioners tied that in together, is, do we vote on, I mean, do we need to make a motion of all that together since that was the way that was presented or is it separated out?
Well, you, you wouldn't be making a vote on anything as far as an appropriation today. When it comes back to you, there's going to be specific details. These are the departments that would be for the recovered income. It will primarily, and I, I won't be able to get all of them, but I'm saying it basically is going to be the Auditor, Treasurer and on down. And it's also going to be then eleven seventy-six. It will probably also then list a group of people as far as, like, I believe the number is nineteen. Now, it could be one over, one under, but, but in that range where the suggestion is that they be paid at a midpoint, but that is, that is well within the sole discretion. But no, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be voting on anything today on that, but you will. This will be coming before you at the July meeting.
Okay. So we don't, we don't need to vote, I mean, we aren't voting on any of, I mean.
No, no, you, you have all the information, the best way to put it, you have all the information for the council. But coming to you at the July meeting will be the time. And I know, counsel, what it's about numbers and everything, those numbers would need to be there. But I do believe that, I put it opinion, I believe that's kind of the expectation of like doing all this, that that would include, I mean, include a salary increase. But that would all be done at the July meeting.
So, I mean, what do we need to do about this?
I, all, all we need to, I guess, would be more of a consensus or could even be a vote. Is this something that the council is going to consider doing as far as the, the recovery of income? So we can go ahead and, and process all of this. That's all, all I think anyone is doing because they're going to then, they've already put it in the bucket. As, as Commissioner Burdick said, they've already proved being in the bucket. The next thing that will happen then is going to list the department. So it's crystal clear to help out the auditor. These groups out of one thousand, that's out of eleven seventy-six will be the payroll. The third part would be, is there going to be an increase in the wages of these, what I'm going to call nineteen individuals, that will be paid out of the ARPA and in recovery as far as until it runs out. But that is a permanent increase of twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five and on. That's, that, and that's within the review of the council.
And it will be brought to us in figures next.
All, all of this, yeah, but I think definitely in order for this work, there would have to be the absolute decisions made at, at the July meeting.
Because I think, I think it's really important to get this moving forward so we can start the process, so we can off, I mean, we can reimburse those negative accounts. So I, I just, I guess my thing is, you know, I don't want to delay that any longer. I mean, that we, I would like to get that going so we can get that. Because the sooner we start paying the payroll out of ARPA, the sooner we can get those.
Yeah, you should be able, I mean, it's all going to be ready. This gives the auditor time to go ahead and look at the mechanics. And they've already, what they had, they've already talked to Lao, they've already talked to State Board of Accounts. They're, they're prepared and ready to go. So this will totally be the pleasure of the majority of the county council at the July meeting. That will be the only thing that will either be a yea or a nay as far as the appropriations.
Nick.
Okay. These raises will be ongoing every year. Just, just because we dropped the money out of this ARPA debate, the one-time raise, we're going to pick this up forever. And I am a problem with the employees getting a raise. But I'm still troubled over the fact that we got a recorder that does not have, short of staff. Is, is there any way out of this money that you could work into your plan where we could actually hire a person for the recorder's office? I, I'm troubled over some of this because.
Okay, but for me, any office that has one employee, you got problems?
But it's in the, if I may, that's in the sole discretion of the county council of the number and the wages that were there. So even, even if the commissioners, and the commissioner, I've got many respects to him right here, they can't vote someone in down there. That is one hundred percent within the county council to determine whether or not an office has an additional employee or not.
But using this money, we can use it for such a thing as a new employee?
No, that's all, that's all I'm saying. No. It can be used for payroll recovery that was, that has been spent in the past. How, how you divide it up is within the council. So no, you can't. It, it, this, I know I might be very confusing, but no, you can't just say, if we're going to take this. but no, you can't just say, we're gonna take this ARPA money and we're gonna go hire three new people, no, that's not at all. But as far as revenue recovery, you can, based on the new treasury rules of what you pay. You as a council determine where that's going, which department that's going, how do you even work in that department?
I I don't want to be dismissive of any needs that Loretta has, but my, I thought we had one full-time employee and maybe two part-time, and that 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 was what was going to ease the vacation time and bunch, you know, that type of stuff on her office. Now, whether that not that's working, I don't know.
She just has the two part-time, and now I think she's done.
I'm saying.
Oh, okay, I thought you said one full-time, okay.
One full-time in Loretta, in Loretta, and then the two. So I I it's not just one, but.
Might be good if you would come back and give it in for them or Casey again.
I don't have any objection to to the lost revenue component to this, I think it's an outstanding idea. Um, I'm not sure why it's being tied to raises and money for employees, it's extra. Uh, I think that's a kind of a bad approach. We shouldn't be using one-time money for anything involving direct, you know, increases or or commitments like that that are ongoing. And quite frankly, we've got enough resources with what we already have through our regular operations and funds to address that. The council also already committed to make sure that we work towards getting all employees to that midpoint, so there's no debate that that's where we need to put people. We had a wage committee, a couple wage committee meetings prior to May, that we had discussed a lot of these things in. The council committed to proceed with one of hopefully many steps to address wages in a fair fashion. We had put together the exact details, uh, cost projections per fund for all the impacted folks in that step. We can easily do it for step two and three and four. We had a recommendation and we had the opportunity in May to take action, but then, for some reason, that has been swept under the rug. And I don't agree with that, so.
Rug is the correct.
Well, how would you describe it?
Okay, you know what, uh, we, you you say that we don't want to take the, you you are totally against the nineteen people that have not had raises.
That is not true?
No.
You're making an unfair statement.
Anton, let me finish, all right?
Go ahead.
But then you turn around and you say that the funds are there to do it across the board. And I know you're you're talking about you're wanting to do raises for everybody all at once, and because in in your version, that's the fair way to do it. But we have picked and chosen, because we have let different departments come and present their case. We did nine-one-one, we did the circuit court, we did, you know, we've had different ones, so we have done that. This select group of nineteen people are the only ones that don't have um extra funds to their their disposal. This is, I I I don't see the the issue here on what you're saying, that this is not fair, because um.
I never said anything about fair or unfair, my point is that I don't think we should be using ARP money to pay for raise commitments for employees, it's one-time money.
I understand.
That's not a good idea.
But then you're also talking about your version here, and that's money that we've got just right now. What's your, I mean, what's in your.
That's like, I can see where you're going with that, so the other, the other point is that the council, the only action that this council has actually voted on was to commit to proceeding forward with an overall plan and developing that to help multiple different departments, offices and groups of employees, not just one or one group. And so we've been moving in that path, and then in May, then that suddenly just died. And now we've got a plan that's tied to ARPA money to.
It's not ARPA money.
You know.
It's recovery funds, using the ARPA funds to pay down, build up your general fund. So you're not spending ARPA funds on these raises, you're using the.
So why would it be tied, why would there be a discussion tonight about tying that in with?
I'm just trying to help people out that are asking for raises.
So what what I guess what I'm hung up on is that in February or so, I'm not sure if that was the exact time, we voted to have a comprehensive plan for raises for the county, okay? We voted on that, but since then, it's been, well, let's go ahead and and do this, or let's go ahead and do that. And when you say, we, you know, did this, I didn't vote for it because we had the exact, we voted on a plan to do it comprehensively countywide for for these increases. And instead of sticking to that, it's been, well, we'll go, you know, one here, one here, one here.
Okay, explain to me how highway is going to be able to sustain raises when they can't even stay within their budget right now.
Polly? Highway is not in the purview of of what I'm saying.
No, when we were talking about raises across the board, and that was what was presented last month, it was raises across the board, and Greg stood there and um Sam said, there's no way our departments can sustain rates.
And and I will tell you, I think we can examine how we do that, because, again, the money that's being proposed here is just for this year, it's going to have to be sustainable for year twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five.
So so do, I mean, so is the raises across the board, it's the same same thing.
Exactly, so I'm not saying that they should be excluded based on their budget. What I'm saying is, is that it needs to be comprehensive, you know, I feel like we've we've attacked little, you know, bits of this and in order, you know, to to examine it from a full perspective and and include highway, sheriff, whomever, you know, I think we need to plan for that, because it's only going to affect this year, the money that's being proposed, it's gotta be sustainable.
Oh, I understand that, and I have preached sustainability from day one, and that's why, I mean, but we have let, we have let different departments come before us and and plead their case, and whether you whether you voted for it or not, yet they passed, and what I'm saying is this, and I, my my thing is here, I mean, this has been tied to what I think is important right now, is getting this ARPA money where we can pay back those negative, those two negative fund balances, is that, am I correct?
Hundred percent.
Okay, we can agree on those, right?
Absolutely.
I'm saying that, okay, if the commissioners have tied that together, and that's the stipulation, then it's not going, I mean, we have to get this done, we have to work this out where we can go ahead and get this moving forward, because the most, I mean, the the longer we put this off, the less we're, I mean, the the harder it's gonna be to take that money and build up, you know, the general fund and to get that payroll clearing paid off and highway and get the community crossing grant paid off. And that's that's my my point. And if, Jim, did we, I mean, at one point, did we not come, I mean, did you guys not come up with a about how much that was gonna be with those nineteen people?
Well, the answer, one answer was, was, but it was unhelpful, because it's it's not, wasn't crystal made, what what grade that you're trying to put them at, so that I can identify for you, look to me, what the apartments were being discussed and the individuals, but I I apologize, I don't know their particular salary, nor am I completely understanding what, where those would be, now, those easily can be computed, but it would be, what's their base salary? And what is, what type of raises the council considering, then then we can give an accurate number, anything else would be very speculative.
So why then did we have two wage committee meetings? And this part never get brought up and never be worked into a plan? We have the ability to figure the money very easily. Uh, I would have been happy to help work on that, like I've committed to any department, but why was there no mention of this or inclusion in any wage committee where all department heads are in the same room? And we've been talking, trying to talk about, which, by the way, the whole committee thing's fantastic, I supported that, I think that's a great thing. But why was this not brought up during that process, and we could have said, okay, everybody, here's here's a new idea. We should maybe focus on the, I'm gonna just generically say twenty courthouse employees, because, you know, this reason and that reason, is that, is that something that we can do? Is that a fair step in the right direction, is that the right first step? I I'm wondering, why was that not brought up in that?
It's been discussed in the council meetings previously to tonight. Matter of fact, there was a figure one time put on it, roughly like thirty-six thousand dollars was gonna be the cost, and I think you put that number out in this meeting, in one of these meetings.
I'm not sure, it's not specific to courthouse people, um, but why?
It has been discussed.
Yeah, and I know that I've heard snippets about twenty employees, this, that, nothing ever formal has been brought up or anything substantive put together with that until now. But why would that not have been discussed and taken into consideration, so we can fold that into our plan? I I'm miffed on that. Yeah, so, and I think it should have been, and I think we could have come up with something. We can still do that, by the way, that's still an option, I'm not saying no.
It would be nice to do it before your next meeting, so we can get this done for the highway, that we just discussed.
Yeah, and and we should have another wage meeting right away, uh, and we should schedule that before we adjourn, and I think this should be brought up, and I think Chris has also got a suggestion, a couple suggestions he'd like to bring in. I think that we we we've lost a month's time by not having brought this up during the prior to the May at those wage meetings, I think that would have been a a great time to bring it up, and then try to bring this into a plan of action.
My point is, I don't want to to delay this much longer, just quibbling over, you know, thirty-six thousand dollars. I know thirty-six thousand dollars, you know, is thirty-six thousand dollars, but we're talking about, you know, we're on the clock here, because we have to spend the.
What's being delayed?
No, I mean, delayed in, because if this is, I mean, if this is tied in and it's not passed, because the whole package is not, I mean, that we can't agree on this, then we are losing valuable time that we need to be able to shore up those accounts, so we.
Well, then what, but tie, so then tying in the reverse, tying the wage part to this is basically holding it hostage, is that, is that what you're saying?
That's.
And I don't think that's right.
Comments here, don't hold that, let's hear what you gotta say, this is why it's your department.
Well, first of all, in the in in those wage meetings with everybody, it was discussed, okay, we're gonna, we started out looking at longevity, then we skipped to looking at bringing everybody to the high end of the low scale, so that everybody could move forward to that medium point. And that was what was discussed and said in those meetings, along with the commissioners approving to change the ARPA plan when you went to them at their last meeting, as long as it included those nineteen, twenty courthouse employees. There is a list of of some, and I do believe that there's.
They're they're hanging on by the.
Right.
At the end of your.
And and again, the longer you go out by not doing it, the less money you're going to be reserving in the general fund. So it's not a a question of of not doing it, you gotta come up with an amount. Are you looking at the high, low end to bring everybody up to, to use as as that, or are you gonna go to the midpoint? So until you guys decide a dollar amount to look at to let you of us work together.
That's what I'm worried about.
You gotta have a dollar amount to work with, you know.
I think the mid-range was the the number that was discussed, and I know all this has been discussed, or it would have never been brought to the table.
Yeah, and I think the committee and and even the council last voted that the midpoint is the goal, to get everybody to that midpoint.
What I'm saying is, if you give everybody raises, you still got this group that hasn't received any in three years, other than your three percent or three tenths of a percent, like everybody has got, but this particular group, and again, it doesn't benefit me in the least.
Right.
I'm trying to help the offices in this courthouse maintain employees. You guys let the treasurer get a full-time employee, took her a part-time person, the lady worked two days and quit. We didn't, we didn't gain a thing. We don't pay enough to stay.
So then how do we reset this, because, you know, every meeting, we have different groups that come in, and it's it's, let's face it, it's not a comfortable topic for any of us.
This is your final group.
Yeah, and I I.
It is.
It's not final if we don't address all the other positions that also aren't.
Caught up with everybody else that, Sam, did you get a raise two, three years ago, your department, Chris? I I can go on and on, I I've been here when it happened, these people didn't get that opportunity.
Right, right, and and.
That's what I'm saying.
And I and I I can see that, and I know, we know where we need to be, but there's still others that also need to be at that midpoint.
You guys do whatever you think's best, I'm tired of fighting for the people to check the courthouse, I'm done.
So the question is, though, what is the broader plan? How do we come up with something that's gonna address everything to get it done and get it off the table? How how are we gonna do that? And that's what we're missing, is that bigger picture here, because we keep doing these small parts.
Well, let's get to this last group, and then let's go for the whole picture. That's what I'm trying to say.
And are all are all department heads on board with that? I mean, if if we have a wage meeting, let's say in the next few weeks, and we have each department represented in that meeting, and they all agree, and I'm not saying some formal sign-off, but if everybody's in agreement that the first priority should be to handle the twenty individuals, that group first, and let's put the resources towards that to do it, would is, I I would guess I would be more for that, but I I don't.
Wait a minute, you're talking about department heads as in Chris and as in Sam?
All department heads.
But the other people didn't get a vote for them, they got a raise.
No, what I'm saying is, we created a wage committee to address.
But let's let's forget about the committee, there was no wage committee when, oh, the highway got a dollar an hour raise two years ago.
Well, there wasn't two years ago.
There was a committee, actually.
And I didn't vote for those, sorry.
But I'm just saying.
There was a committee, and 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 that committee met with the sheriff and with Chris and with the highway, because it was targeted raises for those jobs.
But did the other departments get to come in and and put their two cents in, they did it all?
They did not, but.
That's what I'm saying.
But that doesn't, two wrongs don't make a right, though, and I agree, that maybe not, wasn't necessarily consistent, but we've already committed. The only the only thing we really have on record to work with so far, unless there's a change of vote or direction by the council, is that we wanted to address the whole package. Now, that may not necessarily mean you can implement that all in one step, because of financial concerns with certain budgets, we understand that, and we've got to work through that, but there really, we haven't gotten far enough to step into those details. We've never sat down with Greg in the highway department to say, okay, what can we do to try to make this this first step work? We've not gotten far enough to hammer that down, and maybe there are some ways we can do that.
How long is this gonna take?
Yeah, we don't have.
Well, we wasted a month so far.
The courts, you've already done, so, so this is just one, the next step.
Right.
Do the list, the nineteen that's on it, and then pick the next group when you get back to the wage.
For raises for their thirty-three people, they were sure, and did it in one night. This happened this week.
I don't think there's any.
I just don't wear his composition to it.
I will tell you, what Jim said was, we needed to have a a motion that we were going to follow through with this. All I'm asking for is, yes, I'm a hundred percent backed that, okay, and no, no problem at all. But I'd like to see details of, you know, what 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 we're going for here, the midpoint, what that equates to, and so on and so forth. I've not seen it.
I think that the challenge is, or the 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 point uh where it's the biggest concern is that our tightest funds, which would be the highway and the sheriff, are are probably, those are the biggest two challenges. Would you agree as far as doing anything as far as wages?
Oh, absolutely, but then that concern the people that work here in the courthouse.
Follow with me for a second, so if there is no objection to the fact that there may be a delay for those into those groups, and it's fully understood by the staff and the leadership for those groups, then for everything else, whether it's the courthouse or any other general connected funds, where there's positions that are not yet at that midpoint, do that first? And then move on to the bigger, those two final challenges. Is that, would that be a better idea or framework?
Chris, that includes your department?
I'll speak for my department. We got a raise six years ago. Five years ago, I don't know, that does make a difference. And, and the end of game raises to other departments from various times. Okay, courthouse employees haven't got that. They shouldn't be left out. They, they should get that money. I'm all for that. I'm, I'm good with that. But I'm going to be realistic with the, the county and nothing against nobody, please. When I'm putting my budget together for 2023, for my staff, you know, my 30-something employees, you just can't afford to keep my employees. You're not going to be able to afford to keep my road officers. I've lost two in the last month. I've got another one leaving in a month, and I got another one already. Talk to me that. It's not because that nothing's tried. I mean, you guys give us a raise a few years back, and Andy was there for a winter, and we, and we very appreciate it. We know that. The fact of it is, the county cannot sustain the type of raises that first responders need. You can't sustain it. I'm going to propose it to you. It's a budget hearing. You're going to tell them, I'm sorry, we can't do nothing with it. My staff knows that, but I had to propose it to you because I wouldn't be much of a leader if I didn't propose it. But realistically, the county cannot afford what I'm going to propose to you. If you just can't afford at this time for the 19 courthouse employees, do some for, do something for them. My staff knows a very, very slim chance to none that they're going to get a raise in 2023. They know that. $500, let's say you throw in $500, $1,000 in my department, well, wait, my road officer, they're just going to look at it. They're, they're over it. They have to be because, and I know you just can't compete with other counties and stuff that don't expect you to, but you simply can't afford to keep these employees.
Gary.
If you, if you can do something for the 19 now, the, that's, that's for me and my department. That's where I'm coming from. I just don't know how you're going to be able to sustain raises in the future, because you have to sustain it. And I hope that the council is looking at their numbers real good because with the cost of goods and commodities and everything that's going up, it's going to eat at your funds that you have. But it... Chris got a raise, I got a raise, whoever got a raise, thank God that someone had the means necessary to get raised. And I think Chris has got something. I, praise God, he does. We got a raise back then. We did. If courthouse employees need it, and you got the financial means to do it and sustain it, do it and check it off your list, then get started again.
Okay, Gary, do you have any idea how many, how many dollar-wise we talking about for the 19 people in this?
We were looking at roughly somewhere in that 36 to 45, somewhere in that ballpark.
And that was midpoint?
Don't ask me where that number come from. There's been too many meetings since then. It was a mid-range. Donna may have some...
We can confirm it. If we, if we have a little bit of time to do it, I can run those numbers.
That's, that's up to you if you want to talk about it in this meeting. I know everybody didn't want to be here all night.
Right, right.
I was thinking the $36,000 came from the part-time people doing something. If you remember for us, and that's why I'm giving like two, and the judge, like I said, there's no general fund money being used for the raises. They found that they didn't hire a person in the courts, and that's how they had extra money. I told you I've got grants and stuff to help to move around to do that. So, they found a way in their budget, if you remember, because it, it wouldn't be approved if they didn't find the money in the general. I mean, there was just no extra money coming out of, of the general fund to support that. So I don't know. And then, I think we talked about here before, like if there's grants, like if I can find something, because some of my grants, I have to buy computers and not salaries. So if we can kind of look at different things, that we can spend money in a grant and do this so that something else can help pay for the salaries, there's other ways to try to look at this and to do this too. But when we did come forward, it, it was pretty clear. It was not going to, if we had to use general fund, it was not going to be.
It seemed like for us, that was before the ARPA funds were made.
Right, right. That's what I was going to say. Yeah.
We can take care of all of our jail employees' raises, every one of them. Because you can spend 20% of the construction facility money on payroll. I can put them up where they need to be, every one of them today. But that's 20% that you lose on your future jail project. And you have, and that's, that's, that's not, you know, how sustainable is things? I just hope the county's loving that, and if Chris has got avenues and, and ways to give his people raises and stuff, I'll leave him.
So, I'm just going to throw this out for discussion, just, and this is good discussion. If you were to do it all, and I'm just going to throw out the top dollar, if you were to say, in every single position in our system without any offsets, like Donna was touching on, where you might find some savings here or cut here or whatever, if you do nothing else but bring everybody to the midpoint, including the cost of the salary increase, the FICA, the PERF, the retirement holiday pay, workers comp, the grand total would be $604,500 per year, okay? The gen, that was $605,000. I'll give you a round figure, Gary. The general fund portion of that was $276,000. Highway was going to be $109,000. Lit public safety was $91,000. And EMS was going to be $70,000. I was just giving you the four big ones of that. So, let's think about this for a minute, just hypothetical. If, if the priority, if we feel that it's a priority to get everybody to that midpoint, that includes the courthouse folks, but that makes sure everybody else is proportionally there too, then can we pull that off for 2023, let's say? Can we work through the budget process and prioritize that? And look at where there could be some offsets as well to make that work from a big picture standpoint, because you might have to move some things around. If highway is still razor thin, which by then they probably won't be as much, but if, if highway is going to be razor thin, for instance, or the sheriff, then maybe we might need to move some things around or move some things into general, for instance. But we need to also be mindful of what we want to do with the jail and the facilities and, and the operating expenses with fuel and other costs. But we kind of have to, this kind of ties into everything, to be honest, and, and if it's really a priority and we want to get it over with, I mean, I'd rather transition into it, but if, if, if in the meantime, we're getting in, still going into this group and that group, and I, I just...
Have you done that?
Well, generally, the council has, and I don't, I don't agree with that.
It's the last group. Why are you leaving ahead?
But it's not really the last group.
I have a question. Hold on just a second.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are we talking about, okay, are we talking about the $2 million? So how much would, Mike, this is where I'm going. Take roughly those two funds that are in the red, I mean, is roughly a million dollars, right, Jim?
Correct.
And so, how much money are you wanting to put toward these raises? Is it for one year? Is it for two? I mean, you see where I'm going? I mean, how much?
It's, it's going to be forever, just like everybody else's race was.
Well, no, 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 I'm not, not talking about, what I'm talking about is out of that $2 million that we're getting from ARPA.
And to figure a midpoint range, whatever we're talking about.
We'll put figures together.
Yep.
But what I'm saying is, why would that be different? I mean, Chris has the funds there to sustain his raises. Why would this not be different? And I know, I mean, I know how it has to go. I mean, I know you can't just, you know, put, okay, from the ARPA money, you know, in raises.
He has a huge cash account. He's just got another million dollars put into it.
Wait a minute, wait, wait a minute. I don't think you're following me. I'm saying why, I mean, are you looking at that for those raises? Are we looking at taking $36,000 out of that last million? Or are we talk, I mean, for just one year for the raises? Or are we talking about taking $36,000? I mean, are we talking about...
It's not used for the raises.
I know, but in...
You're building, you're helping building out your general fund.
I mean, it is, it's inadvertently, you know what I'm saying? You, you've got to have that, that amount that we're using for other things to build that cash balance up. Do you, I mean, I'm, I'm not in...
I think what she's saying is...
I'm not explaining myself about...
In an indirect way, by using the ARP money to shore up the general finances, that allows us more flexibility to do other things, which would include maybe giving raises and taking care of other expenses and things like that. And I'm, and I don't disagree with that.
That's where you're sustaining the money.
That's what I'm trying to say. Okay, Sheila's got, I mean, she understands what I'm saying. Okay, you explain it, Matt, because I'm not getting it explained well.
So, you're moving everything out of the general fund as far as payroll goes to pay out of the ARPA money to help build the cash balance in the general fund. That cash balance will pay the negative amounts that you keep talking about.
Which would be the...
But it will also help in the long run in the sustainability of giving raises when you get to the budget hearing process and continue on. If you're going to bring everybody up to that midpoint, you're going to have to keep them, which means you're going to have to really watch and look at your revenue, and anybody in any departments that have money that can pay from somewhere else be offering it up. But it will also help build the cash balance in what is not used for those raises to continue helping building toward the jail project. So, that's the purpose of building the cash balance and moving these.
Very good.
Is that...
And I, and I agree with just about two, just about all of that. Sustainability. I'm disgusted. You've got to be able to sustain this. I mean, the 19 and the 40s have been done. But whether you're talking about ARPA money moving here and there, that's, it's still got to be sustained year on, year on, year on, year on. You cannot sustain our department. There is no money to sustain our department because you're paying this out above the savings tax. There is no additional money. Jim made the presentation. I'm going to be, I've only got a $60,000 window now. I'm already $60,000 some thousand dollars in the hole. There is no sustainability for the future as of right now to get employees' raises. There's no sustainable. You don't have, you don't have the means necessarily.
But in, in the, the, the current arrangement here in mid-2022 is, is just temporary. It's not permanent that we're going to be using the public safety lit for your sole exclusive funding source for your operating budget. That was never the intent.
It's some...
Right. We just did it this year because we wanted to offset and help the general, which is working. But when we do budgets for '23, I would not suspect that we're going to be funding your budget out of $1170. We're going to have to move a good chunk of that into the general at that point. And so, there are opportunities to work and try to figure out where we can come up, and I'm just using, again, the top dollar figure, $90,000 in order to make something work where wages are at least at a better and more competitive level than they are now. And that, and I, I just think that we are so fortunate right now compared to when we were at 12 months ago. We've got some resources, although it is scattered and it's a bit complex. The aggregate amount of resources we have is a lot better and available to us than ever before. And we know that we're all pretty much in agreement that we want to make sure we get more money into the employees' hands, no matter where they're at or what department they're in. I just think then that the focus needs to be on connecting those two dots. That takes time and it takes a plan, and I just, my argument through all this, we're just not, again, deep enough to come up with a link.
If you're planning that you have it or bringing people to the midpoint, whatever it is, how much of an increase is that for my road officer?
Total?
My road officer, take a look at that. It's not.
So, most of them, and again, I'm just using midpoint generally. This would be $1170 at the moment, deputies. You're looking at, if you did bring them up to midpoint, some of them are 20, the minimum's about $2,500 a year. There's a couple of several fours. There's a five, a six, a couple of sixes. I mean, it depends on the position. If they're a lieutenant, they're going to get more. Chief deputy, you see where I'm going with that?
Right. Antoine, remember, you did that Excel thing that Sheriff had everything...
We still have it, but...
Yes. I really don't think $36,000 is going to touch 19 people.
Well, we can, we can verify that. It might, but...
So, I, I just got one, one last question before I beat this thing. Jim, what do you think's the most prudent approach? What would your recommendation be for examining and implementing this?
I would, I would say this, counsel. We are in a recession. We have the highest rate of inflation. You have at least 31 items that at least on paper, you are already going to need more money for. I do not say anyone does deserve a raise or anything like that. I have looked at the highway month after month. I'm not speaking for the highway superintendent. He has spoken very clearly about himself. He does not believe raises are possible. The sheriff has said multiple times about the raises. I would suggest that you not make any decision without complete empirical evidence in front of you. Therefore, you don't need for another month. You would have time for those working on this to present to you the exact figures, first of all, of the second amount of ARPA. We could also have the exact amount of what we call our historical funds and the amount left. You would be able to predict what you expect your general fund to be and your $1176. I would recommend you have time to advertise for your wage and study committee to meet and discuss multiple options of 20, everyone, no one, any, any of those options. I would, whether this is a, you are the fiscal body. Anytime you're going to ask me a question, I'm going to say the same thing and repeat it down. The more money you can put in the bank, the savings may be necessary for the hard times that may be coming. That's all that I would say. That people need raises? I don't agree with that. I mean, I do agree with that. That's what I'm saying. I do agree, I do agree, I do agree completely with that. But it's better to have a job than to have multiple layoffs and everything. You as Owen County have made very good proven decisions where right now, you have over a million dollars in the general fund. You have an excess in $1151. You have an excess in ARPA that puts there. I would exercise caution of running through that. I, to be, if we do not know what the price of gas is going to be three weeks from now, for you to predict in 2023, 2024, 2025, the labor market, I think that's too hard of a call. I would recommend that approach. Have every empirical fact, every option. Be prepared at your meeting to discuss, advertise your wage and study, and put all the different options out. Would be my recommendation for the council.
Okay, that sounds good to me.
I agree.
All right. So, to be, I mean, so what we, what, are we all in an agreement to, I mean...
So, the ARP though, back, the original agenda.
Right.
I, I, I mean, I don't think, I don't think it really has to be tied to any wage component, to be honest. I mean, as far as raises, I, I don't think we have to, because we have other resources anyway, whether we...
I guess what I want to know is, are you going to do something though?
Well, we're going to have a committee meeting that, we're going to commit to that and recalibrate all this. I, I would hope that we would make some kind of a recommendation for our July meeting.
So, could we, could we go, I mean, could we make a motion where we were moved ahead with the paying payroll out of, and then say that, I mean, commit to looking at that and bringing that part to their next meeting? I mean, commit to looking at that and bringing that part to their next meeting in July?
I think that's what he.
I have to say, is there, I guess what I say, there's one about, is there any objection by the county council? Being prepared on the July twelfth meeting, whatever the, the date of that meeting is, to discuss the appropriations, possible appropriations of the ARP and to discuss any type of wage increase you want to do. The only thing that I guess what I'm needing, I think probably from the auditor, if you're not like even going to consider using the ARP money for lost revenue, it'd be best just to say we're not going to do that, so we don't do all this work. If you are saying we're going to consider it, that's all I need.
I feel like that's, I mean, that part I feel like we can agree on because those two negative funds have to be.
Well, I'm going to go and make a motion that we proceed in working with the commissioners in agreement with the plan to, to do the lost revenue claim to help with the finances and shore them up. Now, we can do another motion or vote for anything further, but that's at the base level, at a minimum, and I think we all agree, that's what we should do.
I'm listening.
The motion made by, motion made by Anton, seconded by Andy. More discussion. All those in favor? Motion carried.
So who's going to bring that proposal to the commissioner?
You want it on the twentieth or the fifth?
Soon as possible.
Yeah, the twentieth is fine.
Yeah. The president?
I want to, I mean, stress that I have not forgotten those nineteen people. And we will, will set, let's set a wage.
Maybe we should do that next.
Committee meeting date right now to discuss that.
Yep.
You know, I don't care. I'd like to say, there's so many complex things that's going on. We've never seen this, I mean, I said on the council now, number, we've not seen this forty percent inflation thing, or the whatever it is, forty years. I mean, we're, we're dealing with issues that how could you sit down a year and a half, two years ago and said, these are the things we're going to have to deal with next year because we've seen that come? We don't really know.
Can we have a?
We don't know when next year will run either. So these are tough times for us to make these decisions. And so all I would ask, anything would be put together that we would have adequate time to look at all the documentation. Andy alluded to that. How can we make these decisions without having all the facts? So if that can be presented, I'm not against these nineteen people, no. We realize, because with inflation going up, they're going to have to get a raise or they're not going to stay here. I don't know where they might go, but, but then again, how, how do you provide it?
I agree. So I mean, I think that we need to set a date right now for the next wage committee meeting and that be our main topic.
Well, the deadline for this Wednesday's paper was two o'clock today. So we're looking at not being able to get it in the paper until the twenty-second.
And it has to be in, I mean, how many days before does it?
Seventy-two hours.
Seventy-two hours.
So we could do the last week of June sometime.
Okay, let's do that.
Soonest, yeah.
So that would be the week of the twenty-seventh.
Would Monday morning be okay?
Monday morning, twenty-seventh, nine AM.
Does that need to be in a motion at all, or are we good? No. I'll make, I guess I'll make a motion that we have our, establish and advertise a wage committee meeting for Monday, June twenty-seventh at nine o'clock here in the courthouse.
Do I hear a second? Seconded by Nick, motion made by Anton, all those in favor? Motion carried.
And I think if we, in order to save time, there's nothing wrong with getting numbers put together, starting spitting things out, getting it out to people for review prior to the meeting, if that works for you.
Right.
And that'll save.
Many of your council members that can be at that committee, you should be there.
Yes. And what exactly are you wanting Polly to bring to you next Monday night? If she's.
The only thing that she can bring to us is they want to use the ARP money to down the debt, which we've already done that and we've already voted on it, but we'll do it again. That's what we do over and over.
We. Okay, so I've already entered for our second tranche of funds that comes in. We have to be careful with that. If you guys vote on the twentieth, we'll be okay with the timeline because our funds won't come in then. If it's after the twentieth or, or hearing the end of next week, it might make us resubmit because we were, we're changing the plan again. Because the last plan.
Same by itself.
The same by, all, all, all of them.
That person, I can't.
So by doing that, it's exactly.
It might get excited.
Okay. That was, is that the, Jim is?
Yeah.
Okay. We got the, by the financial review monthly reports, we've got employee time balances. Did you want to go through that or?
It's totally, do you want me to do that now, or you want me, but yes, I, I can go through that if you'd like to. So, counsel, congratulations, just like, so counsel, you have personnel policies for vacation, for sick, for personal time, all those things. Every one of those policies under review are basically a use it or lose it. There's, there's, or hard cap, you can present it in either way. So as far as in vacation, there's a different amount of time for two years, seven years and fifteen years. Be done in days or in hours. Now, you have some departments that work thirty-five hours, you have some departments that work forty hours. It, all in all, it doesn't look too bad. You have roughly six employees that work thirty-five hour work weeks that have exceeded their vacation numbers, their, their cap. Of the forty hour, just purely on vacation, again, it's twenty, thirty and forty days. There's, there's singly, there's only one person that actually exceeded the hours. O M, the EMS department has a different type of program. They exceed technically on December thirty-first, so that's not quite clear. But basically, the any hours that they have PTO hours that are more than eighty after December thirty-first are forfeited. OCC has the same one, they do not have anybody that's over, that's the communications, none of them are over. In personnel and sick leave, that's a separate policy. Basically, what you have is ten calendar days as far as it can be accrued, or seventy hours. So it's thirty-five, thirty-five hour employees, they accumulate seventy hours and forty hour accumulate eighty hours. Again, in the thirty-five hour department, you have seven employees in Owen County, at least of, as of May thirty-first, that have actually exceeded the number of sick or personal. Those over forty, the number is seven also that have exceeded. So the total hours over the match, going through all this, you add it all up, it's roughly sixteen hundred hours that are over. That's combined, that's, that's the vacation sick, personal. So it is basically June. The policy is pretty clear, it's a use it or lose it type policy. Recommendation that, that you might want to consider is you have June to December thirty-first, perhaps the council's pleasure of having people that are over begin to use those hours between now and December thirty-first, with the idea that you have everyone in, in compliance by, by the thirty-first. So that's one of the options. The other option is what I recommend is just simply a payout. The county, you have as a county council, you have done that before and did a payout of everyone with the understanding that this would never happen again. And we're back here on June thirty, thirteenth of two thousand twenty-two with seven, seven and seven, you know, going over. It's not a huge number, it's definitely not a huge number as far as total employees. But those are kind of the options, and these are the facts of like where, where it fell on the thirty-first. But perhaps one of the options, again, that's six full months of perhaps using the excess time and getting everyone out. I would recommend to the council of reaffirming, and whether they want to audit your email or whatever, that all of these policies have been established and they have not been amended. And I mean, and that's, that's what they are on, on the management. But those are kind of where at, it's not, it's not a unmanageable pro, problem. But you know, for individuals, I mean, it can be a little tough. If you're a one-person department, it can be, you know, I mean, I think, arguably, hey, I take off two weeks. I come back, I got two weeks and my work, I, I get all that. But as far as just a pure policy, it's, these are the amount of hours. Counsel, you have the absolute authority to say what, what these are and communicate it. Because that, that's kind of, kind of where that is at. But that would be my recommendation, if you want to consider that, perhaps with the July, but whether it's a memo or out. But with the understanding, your management, your department heads, you really should be kind of looking at managing, you know, that and trying to get everyone down underneath these.
I like Jim's recommendation where we communicate and say, you know, for them to get it down by December thirty-first where they lose their, their time. I, but we need to, I think, we discussed that last month, but I don't think any action was done, and I think we need to take some action on that. So we give them plenty of time to be able to work toward that. So does.
So basically a use or lose by December thirty-first of each year. However, that needs to be our.
Isn't that the department head's obligation?
Yeah, but we don't. Jim outlined in the last meeting, obviously the employees need to pay attention to their balances. The department head looking at it, and then the next set of eyes is the auditor's office. And if somebody exceeds, that's notification. But I do think we need to send out a copy of all of the policies again to all the departments to say, this is what it is, this is the timeline.
So I'll put in a motion, the December thirty-first use or lose day, now with also the distribution of all policies to all employees.
Motion made by Andy, seconded by Burl. Name of discussion?
So again, no change is really needed in the policy, because it's already awarded.
It's already there, but it just needs to be, yeah, reiterated.
Give a notice?
All those in favor? Motion carried. Okay. On the two thousand twenty-two compensation structure review and committee update, we really don't have an update because we did not.
Already talked about it.
And we've already talked about that, so let's move on to new business. Okay, we need, I open, I hereby open the public hearing for additional appropriations. Okay.
So we want to do these en masse, or do we want to do it individually?
It's best for you, Sheila.
Individual would be preferred. I'm going to go and make a motion that we proceed in appropriating six thousand three hundred and three dollars, twenty-seven cents from reassessment fund eleven-eighty-eight for the purpose of paying off the former employee's unused balance of time.
So motion is made. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Andy, in his discussion. All those in favor? Motion carried. Next. So the building fund, does anybody want to make that motion?
I didn't vote for it, yeah, but.
Wouldn't be fair.
So this is the additional appropriation request to take six thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ten cents out of the building department and mapping to pay out vacation and sick time to get down below the maximum limit.
Most of this was.
Suzanne.
Yes, that was what she had related the last time. I'm thinking it was like ninety-two hours or something. I don't remember what the other balance was, but she, Suzanne had said that it was, most of it was zoomed. But the discussion at the last meeting was because there was a cash balance in the forty-nine oh eight or the building fund to appropriate there. And it was a three-two vote at the last meeting to do that appropriation. But there is a, a cash balance to support. And that was also in agreement that she would have a couple hundred hours left, but it would be manageable for her not to go over.
Yeah, she just took.
Right.
She's been paid out of her funds, but.
Yeah, because wasn't that the one where, like, several years back, it was like submitted to pay for reassessment, but it never went through?
The previous office and the proven and pay it.
Got it.
So the building department got finalized?
Yeah.
So I guess my, my question is if we didn't, I mean, if this was not made in past, where, I mean, the ones that voted against it, what were your, your recommendations on where you wanted that? I mean, why did you vote against it?
I think it should be used before it's paid out, but I think it should have been in conjunction with the rest of the other employees in the same boat. But. I don't know what.
I'm a proponent for a plan and have been for burning it down. And, and then the, the second thing was, if there was going to be an appropriation, I was going to see if we would take steps, not the total amount. Maybe get closer to a more manageable amount rather than a full payout.
Looking, Burl, what are your thoughts?
And that discussion led to, it's a one-man office, and they would either have to close the office, all the hours for her to take that down was, was the only other option.
And the other discussion was to hopefully there was enough cash balance that we could have a full-time employee, but we just spent six thousand of her cash to buy her, to pay her down. So that hurt that idea probably some.
What, what was the cash balance in that?
Fifty thousand and a half and something.
Got it.
We still need a motion on that if that's going to be.
I don't care, I was not here last meeting, so I follow. I, I read whatever in the minutes.
So what happens if nobody makes a motion?
I mean, not a motion, it dies.
So we have to revisit that?
Still not going to have the issue solved. She's just going to be building more hours between now and the end of the year. And, and I know that we're sending out a policy to everybody and, and a letter saying use it or lose it, but this is one of those situations which was discussed in depth at the last council meeting that we really almost didn't have a choice but to get her down to a manageable level. And that was where this amount came from.
How much money was in the fund?
Fifty thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Well, I'm going to make a motion for vote and discussion that we address this issue tonight. Of course, I don't get a second, I don't get, I don't carry, then that's.
I was seconded.
A motion made by Nick to reiterate what you just said.
Yes, I mean, we address this issue tonight and bring this amount of money. Has this been advertised?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
So this is by a motion, one step.
Yeah.
Okay. And yet, her office has a complex situation as well. We see as the economy withdrawn, buildings comes cease, building permits will probably cease. And it could be that that office will not find themselves using the additional hours that they are at present. But these, did she bring these with? But these, did she bring these with her?
A lot of them came from the reassessment.
Yeah. And yet, we didn't know that, because we get on Betty Edwards' reassessment and asked to take it out of reassessment.
That was discussed at the last meeting also, and conversation ended up with paying it out of the building department cash fund, because you're draining the reassessment fund down as well.
Because they're both.
Saying the balance of reassessment appropriate, it is approved to pay her one.
What was the balance?
This is the same thing.
Sorry.
It's just coming out of different fund.
Right.
She's a one person employee. If, it could be worse. It could be $10,000, $11,000, pay all of her hours down. She says she can get it down to 200, she can manage it, so. This is unfortunate, but she gave it to the department, it shouldn't pay it. But it is unfortunate, but if you get it paid, then she can manage her excess hours and.
Yeah, they need to pay. You're right.
So did.
Motion in a second, we'll take a vote on the payment.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? 3-2. Okay, Riverboat Fund.
We're going to make a motion, we appropriate the 20,000 for autopsies out of fund 1191.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Burl. Any discussion?
Did we, is that, is that, I know we discussed this, but 20,000 is what the math comes out to.
She had requested 25,000, you decided on 20, and she could possibly come back. But, and she will be.
Okay.
Right. So it's the 20,000.
It was going to take care of BAF's obligations, plus moving forward by so many cases.
Right. So motion made and seconded. All those in favor? Motion carried. Public safety.
So again, on the public safety, this is money that we got from a settlement of insurance, so.
Yeah.
Oh. Oh, the sole, okay. But it was outside money that came in and were reappropriating back out into the repair.
Thank you. Thank you. We got the money.
I'll make a motion that we receive it.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Andy, seconded by Anton. All those in favor? Motion carried.
Well, you're making up time.
And I think we talked about settlement, right? So maybe that's off the agenda.
Okay. So I.
Close the hearing.
Close the public hearing. Okay, on to settlement review.
Should be good.
Already did it?
I think we already did that, so. Okay, on to that.
Jack has been patiently waiting.
Well, in your packet was the application for grant. It's actually the duty energy passed further as a county. And it was a budget attached. I'm all information.
Congratulations, Jack, on this grant. Uh, I'm going to make a motion that we accept this as presented. It was 5,000.
Total grant is actually total with one local fire.
It was 25, 25. Yeah, okay. As presented, that's a motion to approve the grant request.
Motion made by Anton. Do I hear a second?
I just.
Seconded by Nick. All those in favor? All right, motion carried. Okay, and job description.
This was a technical update to wording in the other section to account for the hierarchy of structure and management. Is that kind of a simple description?
Yeah, I thought Jim would present this.
Okay.
Sure. There was a question on the job description for the EMA director. Fulton County has, on August 29th, 1994 specific. Ordinance has actually amended an ordinance that has been in place for several years for emergency management. So on the other category, it mirrors the language identically. It's a verbatim as far as section three of that ordinance as far as the management, the, it is a current position. And if there's any question about the termination. If they don't want to hear anything, I'm not saying it, just purely the technical point here. All this does is mirror the language. It would be very unlikely that I would have expected the group that did the job descriptions to be aware of a 1994 ordinance. So what that original job description just mirrored the language of all the others. Just, just makes it more accurate and technical that supports a unique part for Fulton County.
And commissioners have vetted it and good to go.
They must be plain. It's, I just want to be crystal clear for the committee. It doesn't really change anything. This was just simply an oversight of the original. It's still a current position. It still mirrors the duties. Nothing else changes. It's just that.
That connection with that.
Can't, that, that, that changes this language, that's all.
The order overrides the job description as far as the other, so the ordinance is still in place.
I'm going to go and make a motion that we adopt the updated job description for EMA director as presented.
Page seven.
Motion made by Anton, seconded by Nick. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Motion carried. Okay. Christine, you made it here before we even got to you, so I didn't have to move you down.
Basically, I was just like to move the remainder of the $210,000 from the reimbursement to the food fund, which is 4911. And then also take another 50,000 out of fund 9163 and move it into the food fund, which is 4911.
And that's all allowable per state board of accounts? I'm going to go and make a motion that we proceed in allowing the two adjustment transfers between the funds as presented.
Motion made by Anton. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Andy. Any more discussion?
The reasons are good.
Well, the, the 210,000 was presented as a grant language, but it was not a grant. It was reimbursement for vaccines. And so it needs to go into the actual health department fund for health department business.
And so this takes care of your issue?
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Motion's on the floor and seconded. Any more discussion?
Nick had seconded that.
Mm-hmm. All those in favor?
Andy had.
Oh, yeah, actually, Andy did.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
If you guys want to take away from.
Oh, she, in your packet, there were also some other funds that she was trying to move around or trying to get her funds balanced out and, and zeroed out. She's, she's still, you know, she got 30 some thousand last week. I think she's doing another 50,000 this week, so as they're coming in, she'll be coming back. But we are working on getting amounts transferred so that when Jim gives us monthly reports, he can say that they're all bad.
Okay. So that's pretty much it. All right. Probation, department transfers.
The one transfer, like I told you, that we were going to use pre-trial to pay for the bases for Kevin and her. So one, I think it is from pre-trial to general fund. And the other one is a general fund into project income. So it's the same amount of money. I'm putting money into it, and I'm taking it back to the. Pre-trial has to reimburse.
So moved.
But it's due process. Diamonds are due process.
Yes.
That's where you need to do it.
Right. I have to do it that way. I can't go through there. I've got to go here to that, everything to toss up, and then there to there.
Okay.
I cannot do it the other way.
Is there a motion?
I do, to approve it.
Motion made by Andy, seconded by Nick. All those in favor? Motion carried. Okay.
Well, I'm not sure what tonight's vote for a re-meeting of the wage committee and everything means to this proposal. So I don't know whether to talk about the proposal or wait for a wage committee.
I say talk about the proposal. That was on the, on here. We talked about, you know, the, we're cash balance and more than able to support it.
And we really like to hear your voice.
Well, I understand that. I get that all the time. So one of the big, one of the big things is it's all, this all plays together into a lot of different things, like what Jim was talking about. I've, I've got one of those people that is over on his PTO. I can't get him off work, because I can't get people work recovery. I can only work some of the shifts, so. Some of the things that we've talked about in bringing our part-time people to full-time wages. We discussed that $12.19 for EMT is not even close to being adequate, especially whenever you're talking, I think McDonald's dropped their sign from $15 an hour to $14 an hour now, but that's still a couple dollars more than what we're making as a, as an EMT. So. Yeah, that's, that's, you can see the, the wage amounts that, that I proposed. I tried to do my best with this spreadsheet to show you what other services were paying. I broke it out, county services, and then also private services. Everybody has some sort of twist to it. Some work 24-hour shifts on 24, some work, or on 24, off 48. Some work on 24, off 72. So I did my best to try to figure out an actual conversion of, of what they were making an hour. We are salaries, but we've, we've tried to, tried to break everything that they could, that they were making into some sort of a comparable hourly rate. And. So you can see in the poll, about halfway down the, the sheet, the average wage for EMTs and, and paramedics for county-owned services. And then about two-thirds of the way down, the average wage for private services. We tried to hit kind of there in the middle. Last thing I want to do is come in here and tell you guys, yep, this will do it if we just meet what everyone else is doing, because guess what's going to happen next? Or pulling people over from other services, and then they're going to, they're going to raise their wages. I mean, that's kind of what happened to us this last time, so. So anyway, you have the numbers in front of you in my letter. You have the averages in front of you that I was able to kind of extrapolate. And, and then where it says comp study, those are the low men hides that are in our study that came in a couple of years ago. I think those are out of, out of tune to today. And. Then we show the bottom, what the bottom little paragraph is, is what we're, what we're paying our full-time people, or I would like to pay the full-time people.
So knowing that it's probably, we're probably good to go, or you would have can just before. But do we, you know, there's different hourly work structures for some of these different departments. And, you know, do we, do you feel like we have the most beneficial for, for pay, for time off and beneficial to the county, you know, with, with what we do? Or would you make any changes as far as that goes? Like Green County here says they pay for 24 hours.
Yeah. Jim and I, Anton, we've kind of discussed that a little bit. And I think it would be hard to, to change an hourly rate and change the way we pay all at once.
The challenge, the challenge, right, Chris, was the overtime. It would, the way the schedules work, would kind of generate a lot of.
It would generate, it would generate eight hours of overtime for each person each week, which runs to about $176,000 increase in my budget to pay the full 24. So therefore, we would have to pay the full 24, but reduce the pay. So it's just a.
You nailed it. I was just curious.
And there, and I, this, I'm going to mention it because it was kind of interesting, really disappointing, but interesting that federal law allowed for a special overtime, you know, handling of overtime for situations like this, but it only applies to fire departments that provide EMS services. And so they're able to do the 24 and accumulate quote-unquote overtime, but they're not entitled to pay time and a half, and it's adjustable within a month. And it'd be great to be able to take advantage of that, but it doesn't apply to straight-up EMS service, because we've looked into that. And. So one other quick question, Chris, just to make sure we're clear here. Is your targets, you did the best to kind of calibrate that considering the apples to oranges on a lot of these because of the, the shifts and the hours per shift?
Yes, we tried to tweak it a little bit to, to represent.
So generally, then, you kind of want to look at the annual figure, starting. And if I'm not mistaken, you're suggesting that for paramedics, you're looking at about 23, which would equate to a 40, about 48,000 kind of starting for a paramedic. And then the 1673 for EMTs, which would be about a 35,000 starting for that. Okay. Just want to make sure we're good on that.
Chris, are these figures sustainable as far as what income you see coming in tax rate on your department? Where is this sustainable? Tax rate on your department, monies that's coming in, do you see this workable? Well, that's, that's where the discussion was today. You know, we, we talked about the tax rate that EMS is getting is too high. And we're just going to have to do some figuring to find out where we can bring it. What was it? 1.3, Jim? Is what we brought in this so far so. We'll have to figure out with this where that budget is going to be, because we're going to have to bring that 1.3 down, so put it into the general. So, yeah, I mean, it's sustainable depending on where you bring that, that 1.3 down. Have you projected any figures out, at what rate you'd need? To be honest with you, I've never, ever projected a, a, a a tax rate. Wouldn't know how to begin to. So I think that's a huge formula that probably state board of accounts does, or somebody does that's.
Based on the levy and the budget.
There's multiple factors, and we do have our DLGF and state board of accounts both going to present information on how to figure them and, and level them out and, and still keep some coming in. You don't want to just totally cut him back because he had already been cut back. So you want to make sure he's going to be able to balance out. Like you said, it was averaging 800 and some thousand for so long. So you want to be able to figure that tax rate to keeping at that sustainable rate for everything that he does, not just for a couple of years and offer up.
But we, I mean, when dispatch came, you know, they had a lot less. a lot less cash balance to sustain theirs than he does. I mean, he has very healthy, healthy resources here that would sustain it for quite, quite some time.
So Chris, what I'm hearing you say is because of the wages. You cannot keep adequate amount of help. And so you're having to work a lot yourself?
Yes.
Can we get these people, can we staff with these kind of wages?
I will, so, yeah. I've, I've got two paramedic part-timers that work just whenever they can, and then, uh, I've got two EMT part-timers that work. Just to compare that, used to, I would have a, a, a group of fifteen to maybe on, on a high time, twenty part-time EMTs and fifteen to twenty full-time EMTs, or paramedics. So covering shifts was never an issue, you know, open shift come open, the, they were always spiking to open shifts. Well, now my, my part-timers, you know, they, they work a shift here and there when they want to, but maybe they don't work in other places because they can make more money per hour. I've got one full-time employee that works at another county service because she can make so much more per hour. She works there. Actually, I've got two of them that work there at other county services, part-time. That's where they go pick up their part-time shifts because they can make so much more money. And we're talking a hundred and hundred and fifty dollars more, hundred and thirty to hundred and fifty dollars more per shift.
You've helped us for a long time. I appreciate your service. I respect your grateful. I make a motion that we grant this request tonight. What was that here you asked me for? Sixteen?
Seventy-five or? Sixteen seventy-five for EMTs and twenty-two for paramedics. Is that correct, Chris?
That was the quote. Okay, thank you guys. I may get a motion.
Motion made by Nick. Do we have a second? I'll second it.
Yeah.
Any more discussion?
Is there?
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead. Is there any, I'm just wondering, I want to ask you the same question as, you know, as we deal with the, um, upcoming wage meeting and next month, and then also look at, um, you know, I guess, long-term projections of, of revenue and possible expenditures, you know? Should, should that be, I guess, some kind of, uh, something to be looked at as far as a glide path?
Well, I just might, just in here, and the question might be, what, what, what does this mean though? Like when you, you just, you put these salaries for the year, how, how much increase do you expect that's, that would come out of the eleven fifty-one now?
Well, we don't have that yet. I, and that's what I'm, I think we should uptake. We've, we've already committed to a wage meeting to discuss this. Uh, I would think this is fair game. I think we should give the big picture again, a, a review and include this in that discussion, uh, for a July, uh, consideration.
I disagree because he's got the, the healthy cash balance that they are even talking about is more than the general fund and that they're actually wanting to bring that down. I mean, this would be a, a great way to, to do that and he's, he's hurting for help. He's, you know, I.
I'm not opposed to a raise for Chris. I just wanted to do it as.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to it either, and I've been working with him to, to do this. Uh, but I think that we, we, we already kind of delayed the last discussion for the employees that we were talking about earlier and, and we're, if we were going to give it a fair shake and we want to get, get everybody to the table and we've committed to have the meeting and we're committing to discuss and make a decision in July, I think this follows right in with that and that should be kind of the course of action, but I think it is very important.
That was my.
Very needed.
That's why I made my point when I stepped up here. I wasn't sure what that meant to, to my presentation. But to answer one of the questions, um, I, I took last, uh, last pay period as, as a base. I applied the new numbers to, um, last pay period. And that came out to around thirty-two hundred dollars difference. So thirty-two hundred hours difference on pay period times twenty-six pay periods comes to eighty-three thousand two hundred dollars.
And then that, then there's some perf in there and FICA and.
Yeah.
Which we can figure all that in, yeah.
Anything like that. So that's just food for thought, discussion.
And he has a one, let's see, go, what, a one point?
One point.
Seven five and.
I don't think the money is going to be an issue on this one. That's pretty clear, but yeah.
I just don't know why we need to delay this. I mean.
Madam Chair, I call.
Yes. Questions made and been seconded? All those in paper?
I'll go ahead and vote for it.
Okay. Does it pose?
What was that? Well, why is it, you know why? You've been mouthing all night. Now, why, if you don't like, why I have a.
Oh, I, I, it's a free speech. I'll say whatever I want.
Ray, in your meeting, can I say whatever I want?
You do. And when you come, you have, sure you have. You spoke out loud.
All right. This is.
More than once.
Okay, Gary. We've called for the vote. The vote's been.
Four one, right?
Four one.
Chris, I'll get you all the exact numbers you need. We'll, we'll move forward with it.
We'll have to do an additional appropriation, so I'm assuming do you want them to go ahead and work on getting the exact numbers and advertise it so it can come back to the July meeting for the public hearing, or do you want the numbers to come back to you guys at the July meeting and then, and then it would be August for the public hearing?
I would like for the public hearing to be in July.
Yeah, we'll work on the figures quickly.
So can you add to the motion to allow Anton and Chris and then to work together to come up with the exact FICA and perf and that'll be added to it?
I don't have a suggestion.
Okay, so, uh, friendly amendment or? Is that okay with you, Nick?
Yes, it's okay.
Okay.
You have a question. We'll work on it.
Chris, we also spoke about filling your administrative assistant position. Are you going to present that this evening as well? You had those funds for two years. You're short on staff. You're hopeful work. I think that position needs to be filled.
We gave it.
It's budgeted and it's.
We already gave it.
Been funded for two years.
That's critical. I think we've done our.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To comment on that, yeah, to comment on that, it, it, I think I've said it in a public meeting before is, is with what my guys were getting paid, I couldn't bring myself to hire someone to help me.
So hopefully this will help that.
Yes. So, uh, we'll work towards that also.
Great, great, great.
I've got one more EMS thing that could be of interest financially. State had changed the law to allow for a two-tenths percent, uh, income tax for counties that provide EMS service countywide. Now, I'm not saying we're raising any taxes. Let's make that very clear. We're already at the maximum. But what that means is that you could retool our tax rate so that you take two-tenths of a percent less on the generic public safety rate that has to be shared with the towns. Because remember, we only get eighty percent of the revenue on that rate. And replace it with this point two where we get a hundred percent of the rate. And that would generate or leverage a hundred and sixty thousand dollars back to the county that can be used for EMS or, you know, reconfigured to free up towards jail project or another fund. So I, again, nothing has to be done tonight on that, but that's a kind of a brand-new thing that, that the state had adopted. That could be a tool or something we could use to, to leverage some additional funding for, uh, you know, public safety in general.
Mind what's coming down the pipe. I think that's a good idea. Anything we can get and use to our benefit would be fine.
Because remember, when we did the PSAP list and we did the jail list, the, the two advantages to those were that those were dedicated completely to county government, you know, that didn't get shared or anything like that. And the whole point of adopting these things wa, is for us to do these projects and meet these obligations. And so nothing against the towns or anything like that, but this would be one of those ways that you could adjust things and, and kind of maximize and gain a little additional resources. So just food for thought.
Thank you. The only other thing that I have, uh, Jim and I really haven't worked on it. Uh, we've been, been talking back and forth a little bit. Um, I'd like to look into changing our PTO policy a little bit, eighty hours and try to convert. Right now, at the end of the year, eighty hours is all they can carry over. I'd like to kind of look at the county's policy and try to convert what the county's doing and increase our amount that we can carry over a little bit more than eighty hours. So, um, if you guys don't mind that, I can get with Jim maybe and you can at least compare and see if we're in the ballpark. What everyone else is allowed to carry, this is what we're allowed to carry.
Just kind of avoid, see what other counties do or?
What, what this county's doing as far as like the people in courthouse, how much can they carry over, you know, PTO and then carry over so much? Or not PTO vacation and sick, what they can carry and then compare to what we can carry and make sure that we're in the same ballpark that they are.
So at our, uh, one of our original wage committees, this actually was brought up, uh, and if you remember Kathleen had shared a, an example of her policy that she felt has been working well. Maybe this would be a, a good topic at our next wage meeting to make sure we discuss and revisit that. Because if there is some kind of a uniform or, um, adjusted policy that would be a benefit to, to everyone, uh, it would be good to maybe develop something like that. Jim, do you, I think you were copied on what Kathleen maybe had been shared, yeah. So maybe it, some kind of a tie-in for that discussion would be good.
Guys, have anything, questions, comments, concerns for me?
I'd like to note that Chris had taken the time to fill out a reimbursement estate, allowed a fuel reimbursement, and he received four years, was it?
Uh, about three years. We got fourteen thousand back. And that will help towards that one that Jim was talking about then.
You do a good job and I appreciate it. Yeah, I, we appreciate that, Chris. The analysis you did, obviously you had to gather some facts and put it together, look at the, the, the comp, uh, study that we had and all, and, um, appreciate the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you all for your votes.
Okay, insurance claim appropriation.
We have received a letter from EMC Insurance and there is a deductible amount of five thousand dollars that was not budgeted for, so we need to know where you guys would like to have it paid from.
Five thousand?
Yes.
Riverboat?
Is that, do you think Riverboat would be appropriate? I'll make a motion that we advertise for Riverboat appropriation of five thousand to cover the, uh, insurance deductible that we need to cover.
Second.
Nick, second.
Motion made by Anton, seconded by Nick. All those in favor? Motion carried. Okay, salary ordinance confirmation.
I'll make a motion that we allow the president to sign the ordinance confirmation summers. Second.
Motion made by Andy, seconded by Anton. All those in favor? Motion carried. All right. Okay, elected officials and department comments.
I don't want these comments to take in any way negative or like I'm mad or I'm getting after anybody or anything like that because that's simply not the case. Nick knows that I have started the process of trying to get down some of that, uh, personal time and vacation time. The more I use, the more you guys give me. It's kind of like being a waterboarder. I can't seem to, can't seem to, to be out of the office enough. So, uh, i- if you guys would just please keep in mind that there's more than one office that only has one person. And like somebody said earlier tonight, I think it was Jim, when I'm, when I'm going a couple of days, I come back, I got four days worth of work to do. So, you know, it's just, i- it's, it's tough being a, being a one, one-person office and I don't know how I'm going to get all this time taken off. You can say what you want about me, but I come to work. I always have. I don't know how not to come to work. Uh, that's how I got in.
That's true.
This position. And I'm in a heck of a spot here because I don't think I should have to give any time back. I, I really don't. I earned it. And I don't really think it's fair because some people get paid and some people don't. But, uh, just please keep in mind if you, if you're making decisions moving forward. Thank you.
Okay. Public comments. Fair. And we're going to limit this just to, I mean, just a few minutes, okay?
It might take several hours.
A long time, yeah.
So I, I figured what I'd do is pass these things out and, uh, and maybe call for thirty seconds and that's it.
Okay.
Um, what I've got here is, uh, it's old information. I mean, everybody's already seen this before, but I think people have forgotten about it. And so what I want, uh, what I wanted the council to do tonight is to go ahead and do this. And maybe the council members can take the initiative and time to, uh, go ahead and look some of this stuff up on your own. What I've done here, I've taken the so-called, uh, on-county comprehensive plan in, in versus to the Indiana Code Title Thirty-seven. And I, I, but I've gone through that a lot of times. What I did is I wrote this thing down so that you can look at, at my, uh, observations and then do your own. So when you look up, uh, seven dash four dash two oh seven, when you read it, okay, right? You can see where I came from, from the idea that I've got. Uh, is it, anybody else that wants one, you can have one. I got a bit more on there. What, what it is, is it's a, uh, it's a on-county comprehensive plan that I got from special. Thank you guys for your honor. But, uh, there you go. All right. But what, what happens is, is, is this is the bottom line. I really truly believe that what actually happens, and especially after you guys go through this and bull through this, is our form of government will change. Now, it's not going to be instantaneous. It's not going to be a revolution or civil war. But what happens is, is when the comprehensive plan is adopted and voted in to the one county, which ties in the med, there's two upstream lines involved. I mean, there's millions and millions of dollars out there that they, they can give you to sign and pay for. But what happens is, once you get on that plane, and if you read these carefully, you'll find out that you put a whole group of un-elected people in these committees and in these boards. So, so when someone tells you, oh, yeah, yeah, don't worry about it. Well, we've got an elected official. Well, yeah, there's two. And if you got a board with nine members on it, you got a bunch of other people voting against you. So they can do what they want to do rather than what people want to do from elected officials. So what you end up with is a form of regionalism, right? Which is not a, an elected group of individuals. They're all appointed. Okay? And the way they break these counties down, there's no such thing as townships and county lines anymore. That they, they, they broaden the scope out. And it's hard to read. Took me several days to read this. But if you go through it, you'll find out that, won't you sign up for a comprehensive, you know, economic development kind of thing, that, that, that proposal in this category, which won't be around, I can't even count them for the last two or three months. But the thing about it, once, once that starts and you, and you look at these laws, you'll see that you lose your representation. You, you, it's volatile. I mean, your rep, the people that you vote into office, there'll be two guys sitting on a committee with, with, uh, seven or eight other people and they'll just vote you out every time you want to use money. And, and, and they get taxing units and they're, they're actual subdivisions of, uh, other government agencies. And, uh, there's a whole bunch of them. And, and if you read through these laws, it breaks county government out of their picture. They, they, they become almost non-functional later on. And, uh, I call to the people that are in these communities. And, uh, I've talked to the people that are in these communities, up in Howard County and a few other places, and right now, they're beginning to feel the pain of the people getting taxed, and that the money goes to some other county. You see what I'm saying? Because they're in, they're in another region, they're in another, another district, right? So, when you start talking about townships and, and county lines, these things don't apply in this, in this bad boy. So, and, and once you sign up for the comprehensive plan, and you become a member of this district and regionalism, uh, stuff, and, and like I said, you read it yourself, but that's what I got out of it. I think it's really, really bad for the people to have a former government that's, that's made up of appointed people and not people that go to the office, and that-
Yeah.
I have different, uh, what I can share. I don't know what I'm gonna get, get done in two minutes, but I'll try. First comment I'd make, like to make is, I'm kind of a numbers guy, and, uh, I heard some numbers here tonight I don't understand. First number is, we're gonna pay the payroll out of the ARPM line. Now, I understand we pay about four hundred thousand dollars a month in payroll, okay? Between the two hun, unless we're excluding part of that, I don't know. Four hundred thousand dollars times five months is two million dollars, which is the total amount, okay, that, that we're gonna get. So, where are we here, this, we're going into twenty-three, and twenty-four, and twenty-five months? We're gonna be out of money at the end of the year, that's the first thing. Unless I'm about wrong, unless you're gonna pay part of the payroll out of the ARPM line, you're gonna leave the rest of payroll in, in, uh, in the general fund, I don't know. And I didn't hear an answer to that tonight, of course, we weren't allowed to ask questions, so, that's the first. The second thing is, explain to me, like, I'm six-year-old, how the heck it is we go from an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar allocation for EMS to three-hundred-thousand-dollar allocation to three EMS, to one-point-three-million-dollar allocation for EMS in this space for several years, and we don't know how it's happening? What is going on there? And now we're gonna try and move some of that stuff back, we're gonna kind of go on all of this. So, there's two big numbers there that I don't get, what you guys are talking about. And frankly, I don't think you guys understood what was going on. Sorry, I just don't. The third thing is, I appreciate, uh, Councilman Roberts' statement. I hear, we don't have money to pay for people, we're gonna have incredible inflation, we have, uh, we're gonna lose all our people, we need to pay more money, okay? We need to do this, we need to do that. Can we please take a step back and go, we're gonna be in an unprecedented area now. We have to figure out a way that it doesn't take us four months to make a single decision. And it doesn't take us four months to, uh, and we don't commit ourselves, and we have to be clear to everybody, we don't commit ourselves to the entire population of One County for, for four or five years. I know that's not easy, I'm not trying to say it is, okay? But I just heard, and like, a whole bunch of looking in the next three months, looking in the next twelve years, and you're not, you're not really addressing the issues. You're not addressing the issues. Last thing, and we'll stop talking, last thing is, I encourage all of you, including the commissioners in the hall out there, to move back, and, was this on YouTube?
Tonight?
Yes. I, I encourage you all to go back and sit through two hours and fifty-one minutes, and listen to yourselves, and figure out if there's a better way to do this. Thank you.
Quick comment, um, I just wanted to be there, we're on the record that there are two commissioners out in the hallway talking to the department head, which is a majority of that board, um, and very well-maintained and a well-organized nation, and so I want them to answer one of that.
Uh, Jim, do you have any?
Yeah, okay.
Sheila.
Um, there's a council conference June twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, we've got three signed up so far, if anybody else wants to sign up.
What was that, Ed?
Bloomington.
I've been working in Bloomington. Take advantage of it.
Yeah, exactly, I think, I mean, I would like to see everybody there. I think it's gonna be very beneficial.
We had to let you know, uh, Mr. World, yesterday, right?
No, I think we can do it at the two, yeah. Yeah, it's June the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, it's over in Bloomington. It's, okay, I know it's connected to one of the hotels.
The Royal County Convention Center.
Yeah. So, I mean, this is a good opportunity.
And then the other thing is budgets, we're gonna go ahead and send out the budget sheets to the department heads and let them get started. The hope is to have them all get them filled out and be working on, and working with their liaisons to be able to present them back to the council at their July meeting. That will give the council a, almost a full month to be working with the budgets and, and getting a look at it. If anybody has questions, whether it's the department heads or the council, again, it's given us two full months to work back and forth with each other before the actual budget hearings.
And I strongly urge everybody to, I mean, that our liaisons, to work with your departments on this. Because I mean, this year is gonna be a hard budget year, so I think that's important, that's part of our job.
Do we want to maybe entertain the idea of having like a, a pre-pre meeting? You know, we're, we're, we're scheduled to do our normal two-day work session, essentially, in August. But perhaps maybe mid-July, late July, have, uh, just a, a couple-hour work session to talk about the commissioners, the insurance that we'll know more about by then, and some of those bigger things that we can go ahead and pre-plug in and figure, so we're not, uh, during those two days, we're not having to go and, and figure things and try to add things up and slow things down. I don't know if that might be a more efficient approach.
No, I think it's a good idea.
You know, just plug in some of the big stuff, and so we know, okay, insurance, this is how we're gonna split it out, these numbers are then gonna be imported into these budgets. Uh, we did a lot of work on that last year, and I think we did a fantastic job with it. But I think, uh, for this year, uh, we can go ahead and maybe get that stuff prefigured, and then we don't have to really dwell too much on it.
Sheila, do you wanna talk, I mean, about the, 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 I mean, that, or?
Okay, DLGF, then, on June the twenty-eighth, is-
June, okay.
Our, our representative has agreed to do, um, a meeting. We can, if, if we're all there, we have to advertise it.
I'm sorry, but just- Okay, yeah.
So, if, if we're, I think it's important to listen to what she says, she's gonna review all the, the numbers, she's gonna help with predicting the tax rates based on circumstances and all of that information, plus our balances and expenses from January first to June thirtieth. Again, as Jim has been saying all along, our June thirtieth balances are going to look really good for the state to, to look at our budgets this year, and hopefully, nothing will be cut.
Um, so what time is that again?
Two share thirty, two thirty, that's right there.
So, and then our, uh, two-day work, advertised for three, excuse me, uh, work, normal budget work sessions was August, correct?
Ten, eleven, and twelve.
Ten, eleven, and twelve?
Yeah.
And we have a normal, regular meeting on the eighth of August?
No. We canceled that, and you're gonna start your morning of the tenth out, with your regular meeting, and then go into budget hearings.
So Polly, what do you think?
Unless you wanna keep the eighth.
Well, uh-
I was wondering if, if we, um, I mean, if we could make it like after the July twenty-eighth meeting, that-
That might be a good, yeah, that's not, I mean, there wouldn't really be anything like specific from that to, to tie into numbers, but it would be critical-
No, it would, it would give us a little bit more.
Twenty-eighth?
The twenty-eighth, yeah, on, at two thirty. Is that, Sheila, I mean, is that, where's that gonna be at?
We can do it in here, in here.
Okay.
When's the twenty-eighth of August?
No, July, twenty-eighth of July. Well, that's a Sunday, I don't think any of us want to be here.
She's got plans, uh. Yeah, it is a Sunday.
August, we're gone.
So, what time for our meeting, do we wanna, we're gonna allow a couple of hours for the DLGF, uh, session? And so, do we wanna just, since we're already gonna be here, do we wanna set like a five o'clock, or?
But, I mean, are, when you were talking about work session, are you talking about bringing in, I mean?
It'd be for our purposes, just a top view, to bring in the big stuff, and kind of sift through that to four, in advance of the tenth, eleventh, twelfth, uh, hearings.
That's fine with me.
So, yeah, so I've got five o'clock on the twenty-eighth?
The work session, five o'clock?
Well, do they get in?
July twenty-eighth.
Yeah, July twenty-eighth.
For me, and two thirty, and then I-
We'll carry over. Yeah.
Or Ron's staying.
Yeah.
There is, um, Ron, uh, is going to be at the commissioners' meeting on the twentieth, our insurance gentleman, so we will have some information next Monday night on, on kind of the, some direction with insurance.
Okay.
That'll-
Oh, wait a minute, I have a quick question here. Um, so, on the calendar, you actually had the twenty-sixth down for the DLGF.
They changed it to the twenty-eighth so that we can have more-
Because I originally had the twenty-eighth when we talked this morning, and then you said it was then the twenty-sixth. So maybe we should just double-check that real quick. Because we want us, we want them on the same day, right? So, because originally I had the twenty-eighth in the morning.
Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, the two thirty is DLGF.
So we are Tuesday, okay.
Okay, it's Tuesday instead of-
So it is the twenty-
So it's the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth at five o'clock.
I know, I, I, again, we were back and forth, I was, I was to commit to that, because we started out with Thursday, there wasn't something available, she changed it back, so-
So Tuesday will be safe.
So I will email everybody when I get a chance to look at my email from home, and, and confirm the date, whether it's the twenty-sixth or the twenty-eighth, we'll still keep the two thirty and the five o'clock time.
Okay, sounds good.
Is that?
Yeah. Okay. Is that all you have, Sheila?
Yes.
Okay, any?
In the, uh, meeting with the DLGF, you'll go and advertise for that, because there'll be more than three of us or four of us there, so we'll be safe.
Okay, good. Motion made, done.
Thanks, guys, I think we got a lot done.
Yeah, that was good.
All right. It's a ten o'clock.